I ain't got to have a term deal with men.
And then, yeah. You're in this place where everything feels right. Your heart is calm. Your soul is lit. Your thoughts are positive. Your vision is clear. Europe.
Hello, we're gathered here today for our Columbia County meeting here. Well, thank you for waking us all up. Want to pray for our first responders, police force, everyone here involved today. We have a busy day today as for guidance and clarity in making the best decisions for Columbia County. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Staff, do we have any addition deletions?
Yes, sir. If it pleases the board, we have, looks like, four additions. One from the attorney for a call for an ordinance adoption for the ISBA's. One being the Constitutional Officer's Year End Report for the Clerk of Courts. One being the Constitutional Officer's Year End Report for the Supervisor of Elections. And one being the 2025 L bid for the Swanee Valley Communications Tower. They want to piggyback.
Okay, what was the first one?
First one is a call for an ordinance adoption for the inter-local service boundary agreement. Basically, to adopt it, you're going to have to have an ordinance, and it's going to have to be adopted. And Joel wants to talk about it.
Okay.
This is the cornerstone development area.
Okay, at this time, I'll seek a approval.
Motion to approve agenda.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, we have proclamation here. Mr. Hollingsworth is going to read it because his eyes are better than mine.
Proclamation, proclamation number 2025 P 17, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Columbia County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Columbia County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and burrows to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Columbia County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted therefore. Therefore, be it resolved with designation, with designation as a green light for veterans, Columbia County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November 11, 2025, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Columbia County encourages citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence, November 4th, from November 4th through, through the 11th, 2025. Board of County Commissioners, Columbia County, Florida, Tim Murphy, Chairman, and James Swisher, Clerk of Court. Just for a second, Chairman, I'd like to also say that y'all know the Veterans Parade is 11 o'clock Saturday morning. That's, that's a big deal. So just letting you know.
Make a motion to approve 2025 P dash 17. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Is there anybody here to accept this proclamation, David, that you know?
I don't believe so.
Okay, we'll make sure we get it in proper hands.
And we don't like the courthouse like we do every year.
Okay, okay. The, okay, I seek a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
I approve.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Got a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion items. Jennifer, make your way up if you would, please. Okay, Board, we, we all know we got this project that's knocking on the door out here at the mega industrial yard. I was personally, I was unaware of the discussion of a tariff relief until Jennifer shared it with the House Representative. And I wanted her to bring us up to date as how to, where'd she go?
That's right.
Oh, okay. I figured you'd say, girl, you disappeared. And, but I wanted Jennifer to go about bringing us up to date and, you know, as this is a representation of everybody here in Columbia County on this point, if you would, please.
Um, just a reminder, we are under confidentiality still with this, so I'll, I'll keep it as high level as possible. Simply speaking, the second visit that we had with this company, Secretary for Commerce was in the room. Couple of other people were as well. Commissioner Ford was there. County manager was there. The, the question came up from the company about the tariffs that they would have to pay on the machinery that they use to do their process. Everything else that they're looking at is in the U.S. The, the scrap that they're using to make their product, the product they sell. Everything else is, is U.S. The unfortunate thing, and this is not, it, it's not isolated to this company. It's happening across the entire U.S. for several different industries. But specifically in the, the realm of advanced manufacturing, the equipment that's used in these type of product, projects is not manufactured in the U.S. right now. We just don't have that capability. Nothing at that scale. Everything is much smaller than what these guys need. So the question was asked then, is there a process in place to approach the federal government about waiver for the tariffs? In that conversation, it was mentioned that they needed to speak with federal representatives. So we facilitated a conversation with Senator Scott's office, who then put them in touch with the U.S. Trade Representatives Office. Where that conversation is right now, I'm not privy to. It's not a conversation I'm having. It's a conversation between the company and the federal government. As we cannot waive waivers, or waive waivers. Oh. Yes, we can't waive that tariff. So all I can do is facilitate that conversation. So they're having those conversations now. U.S. Trade Representatives Office has been very, very, you know, interested in assisting where they could. And, and quite honestly, I don't know where they stand in that process right now other than the conversations ongoing.
And, and Jennifer hit, she hit it accurately all the way around. I did a little bit of research on myself because, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know these types of discussions were taking place, but they are all over the country. But, but the neat thing about it is, you know, because me personally, I support tariffs 100%. And, but the, I paid $422 last week in tariffs, but just on four boards. But with that being said, it is, like Jennifer said, it's in the federal government's hands.
Yes.
And our representatives, whatever, which way they see, I just wanted to make the point that, you know, we're in a position when it comes down, well, Columbia County is trying to get special treatment. We're not. This is something, like Jennifer said, is put into proper hands, and we'll handle it from here. Well, they'll handle it from here and then, but talking to Commerce in Washington, I learned when it comes to negotiating the final show, I, I learned a few things and will be definitely using them tools. So I appreciate you taking the time to bring it up. And the Board, if any of y'all have any questions, feel free to.
I know this is a pretty good sized project.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know whether you can share any information, but for the public, can you share approximately how many jobs this company is going to bring to this county?
Yeah, absolutely. So as, as it stands right now, the first phase of this would be about a $200 million capital investment. So that's just what they're putting into the, the project here locally. About 200 jobs. Average wage, they're looking in the neighborhood of about $45 to $48 an hour.
Okay.
And, and this is, I mean, significant investment for both them and long-term. So they also invest in, in education and workforce training too. So this is just first phase for them.
Yes, if they're going to put that kind of money in our county, we need to do all we can to try to help them get it here. I know we can't give them anything, but to do this trade deal, what we're talking about is a big old deal. So I just wanted to kind of let the public know how much it was coming in the county and about how many people were for it. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jennifer. And seeing Bob's hand go up.
It's confidential.
Well, I, I can tell you, it, it is a steel manufacturer. So they take scrap iron and turn it into building products such as rebar, angled steel, things like that. Actually, it's not, not as dirty as it used to be. The, the technology and the, the federal regulations around industries like this are such that they have such higher standards. It, it's a much cleaner, both indoor and outdoor than it used to be.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, moving on. Okay, Mr. Kirby.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The first item on the agenda for me this morning is a solid waste contract. So at the last meeting, we had a lengthy discussion, and I advised you that basically on the residential side, the ask is an 80% overall bump and 52% on the commercial side. I know there's multiple representatives here this morning. At the last meeting, I recommended to go out and bid as a result of these numbers. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, if you want the reps to speak now before we go any further, how do you want to help?
I'd give the Board, Board, do y'all have any, rather here, the representatives? Okay. Okay, who's here to speak for or against this contract? If you would, sir, please state your name for the clerk.
Sure, good morning. My name is Dave Shepler. I'm the area president for Meridian Waste. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk garbage with you this morning. We'd previously met with Mr. Kirby a few weeks ago, expressing our interests in once again serving the Columbia County area. In a prior life, I was the regional manager for the state of Florida with a company called Advanced Disposal, and we serviced this contract as part of our area. In fact, I brought with me a gentleman, Ricky Williams, some of you may know him. He ran that contract for us back then. We very much would like the opportunity to run this contract again. I'm aware of some of the pricing proposals for you, and I just want you to know, I do strongly believe you will get more competitive pricing. I know you will from us. I've seen what some of the rate increases are year over year. This is an exclusive contract. These are hard to come by. You have a residential contract with exclusive commercial business. Those don't come along every day. So companies are interested in that. We certain are very interested in it. And I just want you to know that you can count on competitive pricing from us, and you can count on quality service from us. We currently service in the city of Jacksonville, Duval County, over 160,000 residential homes. It's two exclusive franchise areas, about 80,000 homes in each one. It's the first time in the history of the city of Jacksonville, they awarded two franchise areas to one hauler. And they did that because number one, they trust us, but number two, we provide them good service and competitive rate. And we feel we can do the same here. So I'm just asking you to please consider going out to bid. I do believe it would be in the best interest of the citizens, and I really appreciate your time today. Any questions?
I have a question. Did you bid the contract last time?
One more time?
Did Meridian bid the contract last time? Did y'all turn and bid?
We did not last time. Meridian was a new company then. Yep.
A reason why you didn't bid it?
Yeah, we were growing. We weren't ready to bid at that time. So Meridian is made up of some former Advanced Disposal people, and we were just growing at that point, and we were not ready to expand down this way yet. However, we are now have the equity and capital backing to do so. So now we're ready. That's why.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank?
Good morning, everyone. Frank Kramer with Waste Pro Division Manager, also a resident of Columbia County for 20 years now. We are very established in, in Columbia County. We've been here for a long time. You know, when we lost the contract in, in 2011 to 2016, we stayed, you know, we stayed here, you know, as a partner to Columbia County. We currently service five different municipalities out of this location, and every one of them is exclusive. So exclusive contracts are not as rare as it sounds. As I said, I'm five for five. We are proven as a very reliable. We went through the COVID years. We went through, you know, the last major hurricane, and there was no interruptions in service other than when the landfill was closed. I did happen to pull the complaint log from years of Waste Pro and years of not Waste Pro, and there's a huge difference in, in the amount of, in the number of complaints before, after, you know, we was here. So year from 2006 to 2011, we had two complaints on, on. Take service into, into consideration, that's a pretty big difference. Our price overall, I know it says at the end in 2030 that we're going to be at 79.18, but if you average that out over the length of this contract, it's a 58% increase. If you look at just CPI over the last four years, it's up 20%. I did bring that information if you guys want it. What it's done the last four years, I've run enough copies for everybody up there. I don't know, I, there's any questions, wants, concerns, I'm here to answer. But we saved the county in the last four years right at 13 million. And from the last bid, and with those numbers alone, over the next six, it's another 7.3 million.
Ms. Ms. Kramer, so your prices on, on this sheet here that's on the screen, those are set in stone?
Theres are locked in. If you vote on them, I, I, there's nothing I could do to change those besides come to you and beg.
Okay. And so from going for October 1 of this year, which it should have been already started, but from here to 2030, it's a $5 increase?
Yep, until it ends in 2031. It sounds, when you look at percentages, it sounds rough when you talk about 79% in the next six years. But if you look at where we started at, which is in the basement, at 908, there's nobody, not here or anywhere else that's going to come in here at 908 anymore. Those prices are long gone.
Right. So the 3% CPI, how, how does that play in?
We locked it. So like, if you look at the last four years, CPI has been 4.9, 5%, 4.7. You won't see those, you'll see just the 3%.
And so every year, these are the increases that we'll have versus if we, and I'm just, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here, but if we go out, we could jump from 908 to maybe $18 maybe per house possibly.
Which is what the last bid would show, yes. 1842, I think, is what the next closest bidder was when we came in at 908.
So that'd be a $9 jump for our citizens. Okay, I just wanted to get that out there. Anybody else?
Well. Yeah, I'm gonna say Frank's right. Complaints without Waste Pro, complaints with Waste Pro. You know, that's.
That's a thick package.
That's a big, that's a big difference.
We love him. We love him.
We love him.
Oh. Also, Frank's right, I've done the math myself. It's 58% over five years is what you're looking at. At the end of, at the last of, the last year of the contract, you'd be at 1627, and you're at 908 now, so. I'm just saying, that's a big gamble to go out for bid.
Tim, I see you're trying to do the math. It's if you average it out over this, over the six years, it ends up being 14 something a month.
Yep.
Or I've got it somewhere in here, four, it's.
1438 a month.
Yes, 1430, yeah, which is a 58.3%.
If you do it over five years, it averages 1438 a month. So even at that, you're still saving about $2 million over five years versus what the next lowest bid was last time.
Actually, it's 7 point, 7.3 million if you go.
I was the first to assume.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, 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 the first.
Yeah.
And we're all going, I'm sorry, Rob, go ahead.
Now, I'm just saying, it's, you know, you, you, if you go with the last, with the next bid of the last five years of the contract, over the last, over the next five years, if you just went by that contract that's there now, you're saying $7 million still with this contract.
If it's that, if that bid comes in at the 18.
Yeah, and I just want to say, that's a gamble, you know, you know.
And, and my biggest thing is simply is this, we, myself and Joel were having a conversation the other day during review, and I get it, and, and I've told Frank this 100 times before, I have no complaints with the service of Waste Pro at all. They, what few times, I have had a couple of issues, Frank jumped right on it, we handle it. I don't think nobody in this room could debate that. The, I've had some, being though I've been investigating this, I, I do have some commercial vendors that are, they feel like they're being overcharged, but that's, that's them. And of course, I've been asked that, you know, why should we not, non-exclusive the commercial side of things? I'm smart enough to realize that that would definitely affect on the residential side of things. And because, you know, I went through the Gainesville market, I looked down there, and what was pretty neat, on one particular customer that's got six dumpsters. And, you know, and then I've seen the proposals from three other different companies in Alachua County. It's a substantial savings, but I'm not smart enough to realize what the impact would be on the residential side of things. But what I did learn in this review, we on our landfill, that's a big deal. That's a big, big deal. And Waste Pro tried to attempt it, or I shouldn't, that sounds like you did something evil, but it came to us, what was it, a couple of years ago now, about a 40% increase?
Uh, yeah, yeah, 2020.
You know, we're falling in, we said, no, we're not going to do it. We survived. And I do realize, Frank, at 908, but what this does, in Tim Murphy's opinion, is it opens up the gate for a, but, I know for a fact, we probably got two more contracts sitting out there looking at this meeting if they're not here. But there's, okay, we do this, guess what? That floodgate's going to open up. And I, I understand where you're, you're at the 50 something percent, but my number's still come up to 70 something. Because I'm looking at where we are today, and when that constituent, when he puts that in the Lake City Reporter here the next few days, it's gonna, it's, this is what it's going to show. It's going to show from $11, $9 all the way down to 1627. I agree with Mr. Ford 100%. It's a risk, it's risky. But, and I guess what I'm saying, Frank, is this your number? Do you feel like if you bid this tomorrow, this is where you're going to be?
Absolutely not.
The.
But it won't be that low. Yeah, I, there's not a chance in the world that nobody's coming in at 1102, they're not coming in at $12. You're not going to hit those numbers until later on in this contract, and that's, that's one thing. If somebody comes in overnight, let's say they bid you $15 a home, and, and you look at the end price and you say, well, we still save the $1.27. You did not save $1.27 because you got to go back to the beginning. Now that starts overnight. That don't start in, at 1102 to 12 in some change, you know, it don't go up.
But what you're saying, not to cut you off, the way our, way our policy reads today, you can't live with that, our policy.
But that policy was written this year, not four years ago when it was bid. If we, if we know that information before we bid, you adjust for that information. You don't come in at the same rate. Now you know that you're only getting 5% at the end of five years, so you've got to, you've got to hit your buffer early. That's what that 5% does.
Mr. Kramer, five, five years ago, the policy was automatically rebid. Five years ago, the policy was automatically rebid.
In our contract, it says we have a five-year renewal. So whatever the policy was back there, it really doesn't matter. If it's in our contract, it says we've got a five-year renewal.
Okay, but I'm just making, when you talk about the policy change being reflective of, like, the policy now is, what we had discussed on a staff level some time ago, and Tim and I talked about this, was the way to navigate this policy would have been to push your full increase into this fiscal year. Right, so if you needed to jump up so that each year thereafter, you would only need 3% or you would only need 5%. The way you're doing it here is actually, they'll have to waive the policy, right? Which they can do, this, this is what Tim and I were talking about, like, how would you navigate it? So I just want to make sure that's clear. You will be waiving that policy because the increase in the second year is more than 3%, more than 5%. So just to make sure y'all understand that, Tim, I think this is where I needed to explain that. So you guys adopted the policy, but as I tell you all the time, they're your policies. You can, you can choose to deviate from them and waive them, you just need to do that positively, so. Just to make sure that's clear.
I guess where I'm confused at is how do you hold somebody to something that came in fruition three years after they bid the contract? You know, I mean, I just don't see how that policy would affect something that happened way.
So do you just want to renew for another five years their existing contract? Because I don't think you want to do that either, right? So we're trying to navigate.
That's what I'm saying with the policy, though, is that's where it gets muddy because you're, it's almost like holding us to, to something that came, I can't guess what somebody's going to do four or five years down the line. I gotta, I gotta go by what we have right then.
So I, I want to, I want to preface all this by saying I'm a huge Waste Pro fan. You guys make my life tremendously easier. I don't want them to go anywhere. But if we're navigating this, right, the policy was rebid five years. We did negotiate the five-year extension, but it's the five-year extension of your current contract. What we're talking about now is a modification or renegotiation, which therefore invokes policy. That's when I have to go back to their board policy. I can't, if I'm just looking at the contract, you're 100% right, Frank. If I'm just looking at the contract and you just want to renew that contract for another five years, we can do that without talking about policy. But the minute we touch it, right, and that, that's why these guys, again, they have the power to do everything you're asking them to do. I'm not telling them they can't do it. I just have to make sure they do it the right way.
So I think you're kind of under the impression that your contract was done before the change was made, so kind of like grandfathered in to, we can go ahead and do what needs to be done, to lack of better words. Is that what you're kind of thinking?
That's the way I would take, that's the way I would interpret it, but apparently, I mean, he's the attorney, so, but.
So, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm just, I, I just, I wouldn't, you just don't bid stuff the same way if you know that you're going to be locked in for 10 years, you know, with only a 5% increase. So just, you bid different. So if we knew this was coming up, that's my point. If we knew that that was going to be a policy, we bid it different.
So what we'd have to do, we'd have to get rid of that policy.
No, we don't have to get rid of.
No, you, you would have to.
You mean the current policy, is that what you're asking?
You'd almost like to make an exception to that policy.
You'd need to vote to waive the policy as you go forward, right? Just to make sure, to preserve the policy, you need to say, hey, for this particular case, under these circumstances, as Frank's articulated, we're going to waive the policy. And then you can go forward with a vote on whether or not you want to accept this proposal. If you wanted to stick with the policy, right, you take all these increases, you, you front load it, right? You take all the increases now during the 25, 26 year so that they only have to do 3% going forward, which there's a way to run that math, but you end up going to like that $16.27 now.
Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Kirby. Oh, when we was talking about this last time, you made a comment, you were confident that you could do an RFP that would come in competitive with this price or below this price. What would you change on the RFP from the last contract to do that?
I provided the last meeting a screen that showed the uniqueness inclusive of distances from landfills in the comparisons, the fact that we own our own landfill, the fact that we're exclusive versus non-exclusive, et cetera. And as the gentleman indicated, I asked them why they didn't bid last time. And they, they pointed out multiple things. And they, they pointed out multiple things that they saw different with Columbia County. And I do wanna clarify a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I want them for the public's knowledge, I probably shouldn't say five years, probably should say six, but at the end of the day, if you go from nine oh eight to sixteen twenty seven, that math is right, that's eighty percent.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm. Now, as somebody made a comment a while ago.
I'm simply recommending to go out and rebid to follow the process, as the attorney indicated. I would understand what we're doing if it was on the front end, we've got a policy, says you will do X, Y, and Z, as Joel indicated, you can waive that policy. I, as the operations guy, don't know how to move forward with that, with other contracts, that's my sole basis, as Commissioner Ford indicated, it is a gamble. You just heard a gentleman up here saying you think you'll get competitive prices, in my humble opinion, I don't think anybody's gonna come in at eleven or two, I do not. What I do know is going forward with other vendors, I don't know how you explain you waive a policy today and don't, don't leave it tomorrow, I just, I don't comprehend.
So, so, Kirby, let me make sure I understand this, we got lots of other things that we go that policy by, the three and the five, anybody, anybody we deal with. So now we're gonna, we're gonna waive a policy that's for everybody, now everybody's gonna want us to waive that policy, in my opinion, is that, could that happen?
That's exactly, Commissioner Hollisworth, Mr. Chair, with your permission. Boom construction, if they come in low on paving jobs. If I come up here and said, let's just honor the next five paving jobs with that number and give it boom, how would that sound?
Yeah, I. I like the policy because it protects, you know, it protects us, and we know what we're doing with all of our contractors, it's seventy-nine percent, I, you, we can talk about how much, my, when, like, Rocky said, when the people of Columbia County look and go. They're gonna raise this eighty percent in the next five years, that's a fact, I mean, I, I know what yours, I, I get, we can wrangle numbers anyway, wanna wrangle.
For clarification, Mr. Chair.
Says right there, seventy-nine.
I, I understand that too, Commissioner, but, you know, at the end, at, at the end of the day, it is seventy-nine percent. In twenty thirty, that's right, it's not seventy-nine percent in twenty twenty-five, or twenty twenty-six, or twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, or twenty twenty-nine, it's seventy-nine percent in twenty thirty.
So it all.
Yeah.
So, so.
And even at sixteen twenty-seven. I'm just saying, that's a big gamble, gamble, you know, you know, in, in twenty thirty, you can guarantee your, your citizens garbage pickup for sixteen dollars and twenty-seven cents per home, per month. I, I believe any contract we get is probably gonna have an escalator in it for CPI, if you go out to bid. And, uh, basically like this contract has, and I think it's probably gonna start out somewhere. According to what I'm looking at and all the information I have, somewhere around eighteen to nineteen dollars, that's, that's my thoughts.
We're basing that on what they bid years ago, right?
But that's all we have, but we also have all the information of what surrounding counties are paying right now, and that's where they're at, all surrounding counties, that's where they're at, even some of them are twenty-four dollars. You know, so. We have, we have the. We have the ability to lock our constituents in. For the next six years at sixteen dollars and twenty-seven cents maximum. That's, I'm telling you, that's, that's a hard deal to pass up, to me.
Well, it, it, uh, they'll say, but, and, and I totally understand what Rocky's saying as far as the lock-in, I get that, but I'm looking at the after effect, you know, we're, we're gonna be, when we established this policy, we established it because there was an outcry. Of the cost of doing RFPs, RFQs, what have you, to come, you know, every five years, boom, it's mental, everybody's gonna have to do this, and we've all heard it from vendors in the past, the cost of associated with doing the RFPs, RFQs, and what have you. But even with that said, we decided upon this board at that time, that that gives you the opportunity to deal with the CPIs and what have you, and, and, and believe me, I've realized, there's a lot on the grant, uh, it's a risk. There's a lot at stake because the Waste Pro service has been very positive, uh, you know, like I said before, can't nobody argue that point, uh. Going out to bid, and, and I think I already know the answer, but I think we owe it to the constituents to say, okay, if the commercial was exclusive, non-exclusive, I think there needs to be two numbers there. You know, just what I've learned in the last two months, uh, uh, I don't know, right now, I'm simply gonna say that I don't think Columbia County's big enough to have outside vendors for, uh. Swanee County's got a company, I'm not gonna use their name, that does commercial, you know, I, I don't think we're big enough for that, but I think we owe it to ourselves to be able to look at that number here. But the, at the end of the day, it's, in, in my opinion, it's seventy-nine percent, but I'm looking at the other contracts at hand. That, exactly what you're just sitting there saying about, you know, the boom as an example, uh, I think we're opening ourselves for a lot of scrutiny, I'm just simply saying, let's come up with a number on the bid, Frank just said, that's not gonna be the number, but, uh. It, it, it's a risk, it, it's definitely a risk, and I simply just say this, are we gonna agree to tell the constituents, you know, six years, you're gonna be an eighty percent increase, or, you know, it's just that simple.
But there again, though, Tim, uh, you know, you can't, it, it is an eighty percent, seventy-nine point eighteen percent increase, but at the end of the day, it's still only seven dollars. You know, I mean, you, everybody's getting caught up on this eighty percent, it's seven dollars, and that don't even come into play in twenty thirty.
That's, let me, let me say, go ahead. Um, you know, we're basing all this on what a bid was a few years ago. And I'm hearing that that's, that bid, I, I don't know what that bid was, why it was that high eighteen, but I know this, we have bids all the time that come in from. Boom construction and different, all kinds of different bidding we do, you know, for construction, roads, everything, and one, one vendor will be. A million over the next one, the next bid, he's a million under, so I, I think we're basing all this on what a company bid. Five years ago, or, or I guess it was five years ago, I mean, we're basing the fact that this is a great deal because of somebody bid high five years ago. Now, I don't know if that's gonna happen again, but I know that the bidding process sometimes blows my mind, one vendor will go eight, three million on a road. Who was two million on the last road, and all the rest were five, and that guy's three now, he's lower than anybody, these bids go all over the place, so what we're basing all of our mindset on is it's gonna be, it, it's, it was eighteen dollars years ago, so that's what it's gonna be. Whoever comes in and bids is gonna be at eighteen dollars, and I'm gonna be honest with you, this is just me talking, Frank, I, y'all, y'all always help me when I, I need help. But if I knew, and I was seven, sixty percent sure that the bottom bid was gonna be at eighteen, I'd come in at fifteen tomorrow, October first, two thousand twenty-five. If I knew that the next bid was gonna be eighteen dollars, I mean, it's almost like we're, in our minds, we're know that the next bid, that the bid price is gonna be eighteen or more, if we, if we stop this, it's gonna be eighteen dollars or more, that's kinda what we're, the, the, the people here are saying. But I, I just, I would think that if, if, if Waste Pro and everybody kinda knows it's gonna be eighteen dollars. This wouldn't, to me, I wouldn't be willing to bid as low as Waste Pro's.
If they come in at fifteen dollars, then, Robbie, you'd still be better off with their contract.
Well, and it's according to where, if it's more later or less, or.
Well, I say, even if it's fifteen dollars, you're still better off, you're saving the constituents.
I understand, but, but we're basing this on a bid that was made by other companies that, that we don't know what they're gonna bid on this.
Well, we know this bid was done five years ago.
Yeah.
Or four years ago, I guess now.
Four, yeah.
Four years, we know this bid was done four years ago, pre-COVID, right? So. Everything, everything, Mr. Kirby stands up at every meeting, talking about road construction, everything else, how much it's went up since COVID. And, and this is not bidding on like a road, this is bidding on a five-year contract to pick up garbage for the whole county, that, that not, not the taxpayer money, I mean. They're, they're, they're spending this money out of their own pocket, it's not taxpayer money, we're getting grants for anything else, yeah, this comes out of every, every homeowner's and club's pocket.
Everything we do.
At the end of the year.
Everything we do is taxpayer money.
I, I just did a little math, I'm okay with spreadsheets, not great, but I'm okay. If you go to fourteen dollars and four cents instead of eleven dollars and two cents. In, in this next year, and then you just do three percent each year, which your policy allows, in twenty thirty. It'll be sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents instead of sixteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. You just change that one number in the next fiscal year, fourteen dollars and four cents, fourteen dollars and three cents, you're at a fifty-five percent increase instead of a sixty-seven percent increase or an eighty percent, and then after that, it's just three percent every year, which is kinda what Frank's, I think, guys, if you wanna thread the needle. And this is the way you wanna go, that's probably the way to do it, is go, cause your contract specifically says where you have extraordinary circumstances, you have strange things that drive. The, the, the cost of doing business, and we all agree, nobody disagrees with Waste Pro, very strange things happen during this contract that drove up prices. To me, if, if, you know, that's the way to just fall on the sword, if you're gonna do it, fall on the sword in one year.
Right.
Make your adjustment and then move forward at the three percent, you're following your policy, you're set, you're, you're keeping your, 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 your policy ground in terms of how you want other contractors to pay. So, that to me, and that was kind of what we had originally discussed way back, take a big chunk right now, and then, and then stick to the three percent after that, that allows you to do both things you wanna do.
Chairman. If I can, I would like to make a motion that we do exactly what Joel said, if they will agree to it.
Frank, does that make sense?
Mr. Chair.
Kirby?
For the publics for validation. I'm concerned about the process, that's the purpose of my recommendation, now what Joel just said cleans my problem up. The, the whole reason I'm making the recommendation for you guys and the public is we have a policy. And what's proposed today does not go in course without policy.
Mr. Chair, I want to emphasize, um.
Don't forget, I just ain't got back to you.
It wasn't a huge issue, Mr. Kirby and I are bound by the direction the board gives us, which is that policy, we can't recommend doing something other than the policy you've given us, which is why we're here. Which is why Kevin made the recommendation he did to go out to bid, because if we follow your policy, we would go out to bid. What Joel is recommending is a way around that.
But what, what Joel just presented follows our policy.
It does, it follows, it follows their contract, which allows for that adjustment within the fiscal year, and then your policy says, as long as it's not a three percent increase over the last year of the contract. Which is what you're trying to establish right now, what's the value of the contract in its last year, as long as it's not more than three percent, we can renew it.
So the fourteen oh four that she just proposed, that was, is that going up five percent?
That's going up fifty-five percent.
Okay.
That's a bit, so what I'm saying is, you're, there's gonna be pain, there's gonna be pain.
Yeah.
You take all the pain in one year, and then after that, it's three percent rolling forward.
And right now, we're at eleven oh two, so we go from eleven oh two to fourteen oh four.
You would go nine oh eight to fourteen.
Nine oh eight, fourteen oh four, okay, so, uh.
Big, big jump.
But at the end of the day, you can only levy your assessment once per year, so that's why we're starting this now, because we need to have knowledge of where you're going to be come July and August. For next year's budget.
But Joel, at the end of the five years, you're still under, uh, under seventeen dollars a month.
Yes.
At the end of the five years, you're right where they wanted you to be on this proposal.
I mean, what they offered is a better deal, but if you wanna follow policy.
And that's the reason we offered that, was to make it a lesser blow on the customers in Columbia County, we, we didn't, we didn't wanna come in, that's why we were saying about going, doing this now instead of bid, I am very confident that we got the bid. We're gonna be back in here, and you're gonna have Waste Pro for the next five years, and I'm super confident in that. We're trying not to hit everybody over the head with a fifty-five, a sixty, a seventy percent increase overnight, I will do it that way, because honestly, it works out better for me.
It does, that's what I'm saying.
This way here works out better for Columbia County in a whole, I will do whatever you want, and when we, when we showed the, the bids from outside this county, we wasn't trying to compare apples to apples, as it was mentioned before. We was trying to show the percentages of price increases for their same exact service that they had. The year before, to the same exact service that was bid on, the increases, which has went up fifty-five percent, fifty-nine percent, eighty-seven percent, ninety-three percent, hundred and sixteen percent, hundred and forty-three percent, two oh five, and these are areas right around your town. That has, that those price increases went up when they was bid, that's what that bid sheet, go back to our, I mean, our comparison, if you go back to it in the, me and I wasn't here in September, that's what it showed, it shows what everybody else was going up. Or, and what the, the, the prices was over their current service.
But Frank, would you agree that a driving force of that is the landfill situation?
No.
That, why not?
No, cause we, cause we gotta pay the same amount to a landfill no matter where we go, your prices are in there, so you, so that's built into it.
So you're saying our prices are within equal of other landfills, as far as our tipping?
For a lot of parts it is, but some places it's higher, some places it's lower, it just all depends, I can go to some landfills that are thirty-six dollars a ton, yours is fifty-two, there's some that's seventy-five dollars, it just all depends, but the bids will reflect that, yes, but the percentage. At that same price, if it was seventy-five, or seventy-five dollars a ton before the bid, it was seventy-five dollars a ton after the bid, those percentages don't matter to that land, because we already know what we are paying for disposal. That has nothing to do on your, it really don't affect your bid.
So with the exclusive on the commercial side of things, uh, for lack of better words, the commercial clients, customers are, are absorbing. You know, some of the profits, if you wanna say, to Waste Pro, and making it lesser on, you know, the residential customers, for, correct, I mean, that's the way to say it. And, you know, we seen what happened on the C and D, you know, when, uh, when that all, when we dealt with that, and, uh, it, you know, it didn't play out, it played out that. I, I, I get it both ways, I mean, it's a little bit different, it's still fifty-four percent anyway you look at it, as far as if you were to go that way.
All right, I hadn't said anything, but I won't say something, I've listened to everybody here talk. And, and this bid process, I understand a bid process is a bid process, I do it myself sometimes, I do the same way he's doing, Frank. But this is a different bidding process than a bid on a road or building or whatever. Because that has to do with different money than this has here, this is individual people, then you're saying, hey, big number like fifty percent or whatever it may be, increase. You know, fifty percent sounds like a lot of money, but when you say two dollars a, two dollars a, a month difference, it's not a whole lot of money to myself. Or anybody else other than people that has really not got a lot of money at all. So therefore, I tend to agree with Rocky and our lawyer here. To make this thing work amongst what we got here, rather than go spend a lot of money to get a bunch of bids up, and then bids is probably gonna be more than what this is right here.
And I would just add too, that. I know Meridian's here, and I'm not trying to pick on Meridian, I'm just saying, if you look at this sheet right here, Meridian bid on a bunch of these jobs here that they didn't get, and some of these increases are. Where the lowest one on here is twenty-eight point fifty-three percent, and that one started off at seventeen dollars and forty-two cents a month, and went to twenty-two thirty-nine, so, you know. All I can make my decision on is the information I have in front of me, and the information I have in front of me tells me the best deal is what we're looking at here with Waste Pro.
Joel and I were just having a discussion about this, um. If you do this, you will be running a cost in excess of the revenues that you're planning to generate this year, you have set your assessment for this year, your costs will exceed your assessment. So the next year, when you come back to do the assessment, you'll have to adjust to pay yourself back, so your assessment won't directly correlate that first year, cause you'll have to, whatever funds we have to advance ourselves, you're gonna have to pay yourself back.
What about at the lead mode two?
You would be in the same situation.
You've already set your assessment.
So all of these will exceed our assessment.
Correct.
Yeah, we were just talking about that over here, because the, the, the alignment of when the assessment year is and when the contract years are, we're beyond October thirty, or beyond October first now, so anything you do now, your assessment's already locked. So any adjustment, we're, we're paying for it, we're gonna subsidize that rather than have the assessment pay for it from general fund.
So when we set the assessment next year, we'll have to account for not just covering the cost, but covering what we had to forward ourselves or advance ourselves.
So I did talk to, uh, I believe her name's Dana at Waste Pro. So I did talk to, I believe her name is Dana at Waste Pro. Talked to her, and I brought this up, my father, I've called you about it last night. October first, twenty twenty five is already started. Already past that. So that, and I asked David that specific question about, we've already sent out our notices for this year, what garbage stuff is gonna be, so how would that work? And now Dana told me that Waste Pro would agree to just go up two dollars.
Well, I can't, I can't speak for Waste Pro. I can't speak for Waste Pro.
Oh, I know, I'm just telling you what they told me. Because I asked him, I said, how you, how would that work? How would you do that? And Frank, did Dana tell you about that? What, explain that to me, what she said.
Instead of starting at October first and back billing for it, we would start at January first. So you'd get three months of the of the old price. But if it becomes a a real kicker, if we had to, we could hold it till the, after the first quarter of next year and put it in in April. And that way, we both get half of that. But you don't make up such the difference. It would only, it would be a, I mean, now you're looking at about fifty thousand a month. So you're looking at, yeah, ah, still something. But we we could hold it off for six months. If that helps. I said, we, I've always said, we're, we try to be a part, we're not trying to hurt nobody. But at the end of the day, we've got to go up, and we just can't hold that fine.
Mr. Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion? We're, we're now negotiating a multi million dollar contract. And I hate to do this, I know Kevin's gonna be mad at me for the next three weeks or something. I really feel like in light of what we came up with on my spreadsheet here, and I'm kind of kicking myself for it, but, you know, we are where we are. Frank, would you agree we need to have one more conversation?
I'm fine with it.
I I think we need to have one more, because we have to work out this assessment detail. That's a lot of money. Frank understands that's a lot of money. I like what he's saying in response to those queries, but like you said, Commissioner Ford, you guys can only make decisions based on the information you have. This is a lot of information. It's new to me, it's probably new to Frank. That's my, now, I do believe Madam Clerk getting their motion on the floor, Commissioner Ford. So we need to address that motion on the floor.
I did make a motion. Oh, I don't know if anybody wants to entertain that motion or not, but I am okay with them bringing back another proposal at the next meeting. I'm okay with that too.
Well, I think on our side, Mr. Ford, I think the assessment deal's got my attention, you know, because I know for a fact that we got some unforeseen costs coming up here.
If you want.
Very rapidly, but uh, but I think Mr. Ford, uh, he he would have to rescind it.
All he has to say is, he withdraw your.
I'll, I would, I'll withdraw my motion.
And there was once, I just want to say one little thing, and then I know there's somebody else talking. When we talk about this and I, uh, when we talked about it going up fifty percent, I promise you, if it's, if it's, if it goes up, you're gonna get, you're gonna get, you know, goes up fifty percent in one year. I promise you, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, but I promise you people will could be calling because.
What if it goes up ten dollars?
I understand, I understand, either one, either one, yeah, goes up twenty dollars, two dollars.
But I think it's a consensus here, uh, do we need to vote on tableing it? Or just table it until?
If you withdrew his motion, you don't need.
I'm moving. Okay. Well, let me ask you this, though. Do you want a time certain? Because if you do, you do need to make, make a motion to table this issue to a time certain. Do you want it by the next meeting? Do you want it by two meetings after that? When, when do you want it back?
And we need an answer fairly soon if we have to go out.
Because Kevin. So, so, let me ask this question first. So, so David, when could y'all, when could y'all have this meeting done?
I mean, it depends what y'all asking.
I mean, can we call a special meeting for next Tuesday or something like that?
I, is it that urgent that we need to have?
Well, I keep hearing how how urgent this is, you know, that we need to, we need to.
Well, the urgency on, the urgency on staff time is if you go out to bid, we have to be able to get through the bid process by July.
That's why I'm saying that, you know, I mean, I I that's a chairman's call.
I think, I think it's reasonable to say our next meeting's on the twentieth.
Yes.
Uh, I would, I would have to agree that that's more than enough time to, for staff to get with and what have you, but Mr. Kirby.
The next meeting is more than enough time for all parties involved, just to educate the board. Only reason, two reasons, it's somewhat time sensitive, but no problem, next meeting. Remember, based on this, this is a pass through. This is a pass through, this fee, solid waste assessment we're referring to. And on the other side of things, you have all your franchise holders, et cetera, and expansions at the landfill. I'm waiting to see what happens here. We have to make adjustments in the other areas at the landfill. Till I have this benchmark, I don't know what to do. That makes sense, it marries itself at some point. Okay? The next meeting on our side is fine, Frank, that's on y'all's side is fine, next meeting.
And so what will change at the landfill?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so right now, we have multiple expansions we're preparing to do. A landfill has always standing on its own two feet. Equipment, labor, et cetera. We call it the enterprise fund. We know the rates we're charging at the landfill today will not cover, as somebody indicated earlier, construction costs are going through the roof, okay? We, I have the spreadsheets on my desk and have for two months of what those new rates will be at the landfill. Once we get past this, as Joel and David were talking earlier, we, we know, we don't know what our new solid waste assessment has to be, because we don't, we've not negotiated a contract yet. So it all marries itself at some point. I don't want to come up here and say we need a X amount of dollars to make sure we can expand the landfill, but I don't know what this number is. Right now, I got the numbers based on what we're paying today. We've got to get this behind us. The second reason is, say Frank, say Waste Pro does not get the contract for whatever reason. You obviously have to have a huge transition period for trucks, warehouses, folks, et cetera. You cannot do this and thirty days later have a new garbage spot. That's, that's not reasonable. The next meeting is fine on both sides, okay?
But Kevin, also, when you talk about the expensive, you know, the expansion of the landfill and what have you, uh, that needs to go into play with Waste Pro and anybody else that would bid this thing, because naturally, our tipping fees are gonna be up, correct? So with that being said, that's got to be filtered in to these types of numbers.
Right, and and my way of thinking, we need to get this done first. Then we know exactly the business model, because if we hold tipping rates the same, if we do this on the commercial side of things, I guess I'm saying that right on the class one side of things, on the class three, Commissioner Murphy, you and I have had this conversation, it's almost said. There's a fine line between the eighty year old feller that just puts his trash out by the highway, that's it. And you got folks in business on the class three side of things, who's paying for those expansions? We don't separate class one versus class three in the budget. It's all one landfill. So I'm always a little confused when it comes to that. Who pays the bill for all these expansions?
The tipping fee pays the bill, though, right?
It depends on where you're at. That's what I'm saying, we do not separate it. Class one, class three, you've got these major expansions. Landfill's one budget. So the question always is, on the commercial side of things, when I refer to franchise holders, it's a reasonable argument. What Commissioner Murphy just indicated a while ago about the exclusive versus non-exclusive. The only reason in my research that you're paying the taxpayer, the general taxpayer, paying lower on the residential side is because we are exclusive on the commercial side.
I understand that.
Over in in the spreadsheet, last quarter or two, if you look at the spreadsheets, we're paying, Frank, correct on this, we're paying roughly fifty percent more on the commercial side than in other areas, based on exclusive versus non-exclusive. Would you agree with that?
You're saying you're paying fifty percent more on your commercial price?
Yes, sir.
No, you got it right now, five dollars and like forty seven cents a yard in other areas. Break down, think the highest range is ten, over ten dollars a yard. You're paying five dollars a yard less, which is a lot.
You hear it on there, next meeting's fine, man.
Okay.
So we're getting into the weeds. We're getting into the weeds.
Okay, yeah, but that, that's fine. And we're not negotiating, but the gentleman's been patient, just, uh, not, not to combat, but if you got a statement real quick before we go on. And I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Dave Schaeffler, sorry, with Meridian. Yeah, no, just a couple of things were said. Um, the comment was made, rates would not come in less than what's up there. I'm not here wasting my time or your time. I can assure you rates will come in less than what's up there. The other thing no one's talking about is your commercial rates. Next year, you're at seven dollars, then it goes to eight dollars. You know what the commercial rates are in the city of Jacksonville? About five dollars and forty cents a cubic yard. The commercial rates down here are very high. I'm a former business owner, I own my own garbage company, I sold it to Meridian Waste. Those are very high rates, and what I'm telling you is you'll get more competitive rates for your business owners as well. The third thing is, you mentioned the city of Jacksonville. We were the low bid at seventeen dollars, and we will most likely be a low bid here. The reason for the increase is, we do recycle pickup up there. You don't do recycling here. The recycle disposal used to be around sixty dollars a ton, it's over a hundred and fifty dollars a ton now. That's part of the reason for that big increase. And every Waste Pro got a big increase as well, everybody did up there, but it's completely, it's apples and oranges. There is no exclusive commercial to subsidize. It's a completely different game. In fact, all of the rate comparisons that were included in their recommendation, none of those have exclusive commercial. You can't use those rates. It's, it's apples and oranges. So what I'm trying to tell you is, I understand you think there's a big risk of an RFP, but I I don't see it that way, really and truly. First of all, they're not gonna walk away from this. If if rate doesn't come in lower than that, I I promise you, they'll guarantee it. But what I'm telling you is the rates will come in lower than that, because those are very high increases, no matter how you cut it, no matter how you divide it. And I'm telling you, you get more competitive pricing than that. That's what I want to say, so I please encourage you to go.
Thank you, David. Go ahead, Rock.
So the proposal you're talking about, you just mentioned that I brought up, uh, for the seventeen forty two. Your proposed new rate there is twenty two thirty nine. So you went up five dollars?
My proposed rate for what, sir?
It was, you start, your old rate is seventeen forty two. Your new rate is twenty two thirty nine, so you went up five dollars.
That was over three years ago. We had three percent annual CPIs, and then this last.
I'm just saying that you went up over five dollars on that one contract that year.
For mainly due to almost doubling of the recycle disposal fee, correct?
I I'm just like.
But that has nothing to do with what we had bid down here with an exclusive commercial contract. I I can assure you that, and I just think it's disingenuous.
Leon County.
Okay, I will.
In Leon County, you know, it was fifteen oh three, the old rate, and it just went up to, uh, twenty three seventeen. Well, actually, uh, yeah, twenty three seventeen, yeah, that's, that's the next load bid. And then in one, Clay County was nineteen, or twelve twenty, twelve ninety seven, it went up to nineteen twenty five. I'm just saying, if you look at this, at this level, you're, we're still way underpriced, even at sixteen twenty seven.
Yeah, and and, you know, not debating one company versus the other, but, uh, before I forget it, the information Rocky's got, there's some good information that's for good board. David, uh, make sure we get that, because I think that's.
It was emailed out to you.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, David sent out an email.
I didn't see that. The, uh, but, uh,
So one more thing.
But, uh.
I mean, one more thing, I just, again, all those comparisons don't have exclusive commercial business in them. And I just think, I understand your focus on the residential rate, but again, there's additional savings on the commercial rates. That's the point I'm trying to get across.
Okay, David, I appreciate, look here, we're, we're, okay, we're getting to the, in in Frank's defense, we're getting to, appreciate it. And this, uh, topic is taken. Okay, the, uh, okay, uh, at this point in time, uh, going back to where we are on the agenda, uh, we've got a workshop scheduled here at eleven thirty, I believe.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay, so with that being said, I'm gonna change things around here a little bit, Kevin, because we can deal with it, because the constitutionals, there's a couple that needs to get on to some other aspects. And, uh, uh, Mr. Okay, Tommy, Ms. Brown, uh, Ms. Brown is, uh, a bit under the weather today, and then she's also got another commitment. Then Mr. John Dorret, where there's John, I'll get you up here immediately thereafter. And I apologize to the public, but I think this will go quick. Tommy?
Good morning, everybody. Um, my, Tommy Brown, Columbia County Supervisor of Elections. Um, I'll be brief, because I know that we're running a little behind schedule, so that you can move on. Um, I am pleased to share with you that David does have a little slide for me. Thank you. We're turning back fifty five thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars from the previous year, so we're, we're pretty excited about that. Um, I can't really elaborate on how that happened, but we're thankful it did. So we really watched, um, our spending this year, and I hope to see some changes and maybe some, um, places we can save of the upcoming years as well. So we're trying to, to work that out and make our budget a little more friendly for the commissioners. Um, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, I'd just like to remind everybody that even though this has not been an election year, it has in, because it falls in the fiscal year. So my budget covers an election every single year. Every four years, it covers two elections. So I just wanted to remind people of that. Sometimes that's, that's forgotten. And, um, I do, would so kindly like to ask that somebody would, or if you would consider, maybe returning some of those funds to our office. We are desperately in need, um, of a new cargo van. Um, the one I have now has, uh, the transmission's completely gone. Um, so it's a huge concern for me, especially during election year. I haul equipment, um, and I use that van for hauling ballots. Um, I don't want to be left on the side of the road. Um, it's a huge security issue for our office. Um, so having something that is, um, roadworthy, um, and reliable is really important to us. So I would appreciate if you would consider maybe returning that to us while we're in the market sometime before the election next year. Um, I also have a cargo, a box truck. My box truck is really old, approximately twenty years old, has ninety thousand miles on it right now, that two hauls equipment. It does not have a lift gate on it, which really would be great if we could find one that did have a lift gate. I do know that that truck is also borrowed by, uh, Donnie comes and gets it, uh, from maintenance and uses it during hurricane season. I, when we having to set up some of these shelters, and so he's moving stuff around. So I do know it's borrowed and used by the county as well. So I'm not sure what the options are for me there regarding that box truck, if the county would like me to keep it or look for a new one, um, so they can use it as well. Do I need to just sell it? Um, so if someone could work with me on something along those lines, maybe give me some options or, um, if there's anything available or what they think I may do in the, I I run elections, I don't buy automobiles. So I would appreciate some, some advice and guidance in that area.
Real quick, Tommy, Kevin, you want to interrupt?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We, we have a fleet management program, um, it's administered by a person. I think there's multiple ways you can get there, even via our lease program or swapping around, but if you'll just get with me.
Yes, sir.
In the immediate future, we'll figure something out.
Okay, sounds great. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Kevin.
I'm moving.
Uh, well, I have one, a couple of other things I'd just like to just kind of bring to the attention. Um, I do know that we, um, the ADA was brought up, uh, previous meeting. I don't really have a whole lot to address that whole issue, other than I do feel like our building wasn't compliant. Um, I do think it wants maybe rechecking professionally and having those just to make sure we don't want to have any problems um, in that department. Um, the reason why it was not addressed, I would like to share with that, because it was brought to my attention back in twenty twenty four, is I was in the middle of three federal elections. You don't mess with security when you're in the middle of an elections. I don't know what it all requires. I know that those doors are not set up for automatic opening and closing the way they're in place, because for somebody to come up to a door and it automatically opens in a wheelchair, one of my doors would open up towards the wheelchair. So I I don't know what it needed. Um, I knew wiring was probably gonna be concerned. And a lot of my wiring runs through that area right there, uh, for internet, um, and everything else that actually controls some of the building, even for her over there, um, and economic development. So, um, I wasn't willing to take the risk or the opportunity, um, to have that addressed at that time. Um, it's kind of scary when you start messing with stuff like that during an election. Uh, the other thing too is, um, I would like to root quickly. Mr. Kraus, I do appreciate everything you do for our office, but I do feel like, um, we're lacking a little bit of communication. Um, I, if you don't mind, I would, I was brought to my attention a while back that, um, my email had been removed or even dropped somehow or another. I'll, I rely a lot of times on my other constitutional, um, officers for information, because I'm not getting the information that I, I really need. I do have, um, an, an important email that has gone out that I haven't gotten a response for yet. I really need that ASAP. Uh, my candidate packets are in complaint till I have that, that information, um, in place. Um, so I do feel like maybe you and I can work on that. If you would check those lists to make sure my name is on them all. Um, also, during this time of the year, I'm prepared for an election. So I'd appreciate maybe some, courtesy emails would be great for my office. This week, I'm conducting an election every other year. So it's, I, the last thing that's on my mind is this meeting. I can promise you that. So if you would not, um, forget me, I am, make sure that I am notified of everything that's going on in the county. It's very important for my office that I know that. Um, and I think that may be all that I have.
Any questions for Ms. Brown?
I'm moving, we approve the FYE.
I move we approve FYE two thousand twenty-five annual year-end finance report for supervisor.
Got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Tommy, help you feel better.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for working.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a second motion for placing those funds in reserves or whatever improvements that. So with Mr. Kirby.
Motion in the second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
And in terms of the handicapped stuff, Commissioner Murphy has been talking with us about the possibility of us having to hire somebody to really look at handicap accessibility countywide.
Thank you, David. Commissioner John Dorrit?
You can come on. So basically during the budget, he asked for these funds. We thought perfect use of court innovation funds because it's an innovative technology issue. Since the budget was adopted without these funds, we learned that we cannot use court innovation funds. So we want to restore these funds to his budget.
Thank you, David. And good morning, Commissioners. Just as Mr. Kraus just described, we've been in communication previously, he and I and Mr. Foreman, concerning the increase in the IT budget. Everybody hoping to save money where we can. And the hope was that it could be drawn from the Innovation Fund, but upon closer examination and conversation with our Chief Judge, it was clear that it could not be drawn from that. That is solely for the innovations within the courthouse. This is for our day-to-day recurring Article Five expenses for IT, critical infrastructure. And gentlemen, I don't come to you asking, you know, for it to be increased. This isn't about, you know, toys or anything like this. This is about critical needs for our office. If you see it delineated hardware upgrades and software, the prices for these things have increased exponentially. The prices to comply with all the FDLE audits and what's contained there in Communication Systems and Florida Statute twenty-nine double odd eight is a lot. Those things keep going up, just like y'all talk, everything else, the IT stuff it does, we do as best we can. Y'all help, you do, you pay all these. I know it's expensive. Y'all fund a portion of one of our IT staff members' salaries. Our IT director, we pay for our radios. We pay for our Lexus Nexus subscriptions, all those things. We pay for, we do everything we can. I live here. I'm a Columbia County resident too. I'm not naive. Um, so we try to do the best we can. But we are here humbly asking that you honor our request to fully fund our IT.
I move we approve BA twenty-six oh-six.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. John, thank you. I had to discuss with Dana yesterday. This is, uh, IT is an amazing thing, but we appreciate what y'all do for us.
Thank you, gentlemen. Likewise, I appreciate everything y'all do.
Despite despite bringing that fellow with you.
Everybody's got to have a job.
Did you want to, did you want to real quickly go through the other constitutionals?
Yes, please.
All right. So the next one is FYE financial year report from the Sheriff's Office. Basically, he's turning in thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. He would like you to take thirty-eight thousand, five hundred of them and basically use, allow him to use it to buy a vehicle for the detention center.
Okay, all right. And I talked to the sheriff early this morning. He is celebrating the birth of his first grandchild. So and he has some business to take care of, but he just wanted to reach out and say thank you.
I make a motion, we approve. Money in the budget.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
The next one is the fiscal year end report for the tax collector. Uh, he's turning in a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five twenty-eight oh-two. In your workshop, we're going to talk about his interest in acquiring a building, uh, which he would like to have you set that money aside for any costs associated with acquisition of that building, should you so choose to go in that direction.
Got a motion? And second, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
The next one is fiscal year for the property appraiser. Uh, he's turning in approximately ninety-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-one. As it goes, as it collects out, um, he is asking you to just set that aside in a reserve. So if there are space needs that require him to do changes to his office, money is set aside for it. He's not asking for anything other than just put it aside for that.
Got a motion and a second, no discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
And then clerk of courts, uh, he is turned in his report. He's turning in twenty-two thousand, four forty, four eleven forty-one. And he's asking you to return those funds to his office to fund operations in this fiscal.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
That's all the Constitution.
Okay. All right. So with that being out of the way, we'll drop right back to Mr. Kirby to finish up his segment.
One more question. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. The next one is down in Ellisville. As we all know, we're growing at a rapid rate. So we decided to go ahead and let's put another well down. We had three bids. Recommend a motion award bid number twenty twenty-five Q to advance project solutions, a total bid amount of three hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and to approve the agreement.
Got a motion and a second, no discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you. The next item is a housekeeping item. Signal upgrades by Florida Department of Transportation at Baskin Norris and Bond. Recommend a motion to approve the railroad reimbursement agreement with FDOT for signal upgrades at Baskin Norris and Bond with annual maintenance, three thousand, six hundred dollars.
Got a motion? Got a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Okay. The final item. So as we all know, we're building our new kennels. And we're paying a month to month cost to the Humane Society to their animals. So this is a two-fold ask here. One, we'll start off, the faster we do this, the faster we have to be doing the month to month. Second part of this is you can build a hundred kennels. If nobody's tending to our animals, you're not going to have enough space. Therefore, you're not going to accomplish what we did a couple of years ago. We went out to bid, we had one successful bidder. And I want to be very, very honest. This is going to be a situation until we get thirty days into it, sixty days into it, ninety days into it. We're going to see the results one way or another. The gentleman that bid on this has promised us whether he's got to come once a week, twice a week, twice a month, whatever the math is. He's going, the commitment is contractually, he's going to put us position, but we don't have to say we don't have kennel space. That's the end of the day.
And then you also agreed to rehome a certain percentage of the dogs?
That is correct. And that's why.
Is it ninety-five percent?
I think so. Ninety-five percent? What's the percentage? Rehoming? What's the commitment?
So is Tom's at less than ten percent?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Doug Edens. I'm the founder of Zutrek and the American Animal Cruelty Investigation School. Your question was?
What percentage of dogs are you going to rehome? Are you guaranteed that you'll rehome?
Ideally, a hundred percent, but we know that that's not a reality. Um, most places now try to target a ten percent for no kill. And that is still a tough, um, that's a tough ask in a lot of place, in a lot of places, which is why you see your shelters just pile up with animals. We did do a couple of test runs with this. Uh, the runs that we did, we rehomed, well, so we rehomed, we transported forty animals. Out of those forty animals, thirty-seven of them were placed in homes. That works out to be about a ninety-three percent live release rate, which is better than what most shelters do. Um, and that's kind of the the crux of this, this concept is that rather than placing the animal in a kennel and waiting for the adopter to show up to it, we are being a little bit more proactive using AI tools and some other technology to actually take the animal to the high probability location to where they will be adopted.
And where are you located at?
I'm located out of Pensacola, Florida, but we do a lot of training. I train across the state. We do all the animal control officer certification classes. In fact, when Columbia County, uh, when y'all started your new, uh, animal enforcement division a few years ago, we were the ones that came in and did the training for that. We're familiar with the, where y'all have grown and how y'all have started from.
So, so Joe, this contract, if I'm reading it right, we have a, we have a clause where if the service is not being provided to our expectation, we can, we can, uh, do away with this contract at any time?
Uh, I I'd need to review it for that specific issue, but that'd be my expectation.
I believe that's your understanding.
So.
So the, the, the primary issue, and I think you guys recognize it, is, you know, the, the problem was capacity. And and this, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to maintain a fairly steady capacity. This is that stopgap to make sure that when we do exceed our kennel count, we don't find ourselves in a situation that we're presently in, we have nowhere to put dogs.
And you will.
Right, right. So you're.
That's the reality across the United States.
I think, uh, it's fair to say this is our parachute, right? You're our parachute, right? To make sure that if we're, if we're coming down to that zero condition, we have somebody we can call who can keep us out of that zero.
And we're working through the weeds together with this. It's, it's not a, you know, this is not something that's unique to Columbia County. It's something that's, it's a national problem.
We just got a lot of concerns about how many, what's our kill rate going to be, what our adoption rate is going to be.
Well, Zutrek doesn't euthanize any animals. And the way that we do it, now, if I get an animal, say that we have an animal that has a bite history, those animals, we have to, we have an obligation to let the location that it goes to know that. Okay? And if they make the choice to it, our recommendations is any animal that's considered for euthanasia, um, it needs to be independent. Typically, my recommendation would be that they have two behaviors to look at it, uh, and give them a, a particular amount of time that they can actually, um, make the change in the animal. So there's three classifications of it. When the animal comes in, the animal's either adoptable or it's not adoptable. Those are easy. The ones that are going to, that are a challenge are the animals that haven't been properly socialized. Okay? Or they've been living in a shelter for ninety, a hundred days because those animals are psychologically destroyed anyway. Um, and at that point, those are the animals that the behaviorists are going to have to come in and say, hey, look, this animal may or may not be an adoption candidate. And so their job is going to be to make that decision. That way it's an objective one. It's not a matter of capacity on my end or your end.
Okay, any other questions?
There's a motion on this or we don't?
We don't need, uh, this is a discussion item, correct, Kevin?
No, sir. The reason, the reason I put it under discussion was I wanted y'all to vet it, to understand it, but I am requesting a motion to approve. I just want to discuss it first.
Got a motion? Second. No further questions. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, sir.
Workshop?
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Bob. I didn't see you. That, that, I'll, I'll get you in public comments because it looks like y'all are going to be here for the, you got some questions about the cat thing. I'm sorry, I'm studying this thing here because I can't hardly read. Sorry about that. But I'll get you, Bob.
So at this point in time, we're asking to, I guess, table and go into the workshop?
Time is.
Close the session. We'll come back to the rest of the items later.
You're going to close regular session, take a brief recess, reconvene at eleven o'clock for a workshop.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. With that being said, in case y'all need to leave, real quick, uh, Bob, uh, come up and give your name and ask a question real quick. We may not be able to give you an answer, but I know y'all may need to leave. We're going to make you walk.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with all the. My name is Bob Brennan, Columbia County resident since nineteen eighty-four. Uh, this last program, you, uh, Kate on the dogs, what about the cats? What are we doing about the cats in that area? Because we got a hundred thousand of them in the area that are wild.
I've seen the gentleman stand up. I guess you.
We are open because in animal services, animal enforcement, there's the number of species you you deal with exceed actually dogs and cats. Um, cats are actually easier to find homes for than dogs are. They are. They're, they're easier to find. So now if we need it, we can, we can.
Okay, okay. We, we got to do it here. Yeah, okay. Another procedure, Bob. I got you. Go ahead, sir.
So I was just saying that we are prepared. We can, and I've even spoken with animal enforcement about this. Should they come across a case where they come in with some unusual type of, of species, uh, whether it be an exotic bird, which is actually one of our, our specialties, we will do everything we can to make the capacity to, um, to help out with that. And and we live in Florida. Uh, some of the crazy animals that live in Florida, there's no telling what you'll come up, uh, with encountering. But we, we have the resources and we have people that are highly experienced in some of the threat from your big cats on.
Well, I know in the last week, myself and Kelly here, we had a conversation at the fair and she's told me, she also spoke to you, Rock, uh, at the fair. So, uh, beans that we're fixing to go into recess because we've got a workshop that's specifically, uh, for this time. And so just to give you all, we're going to take a little five-minute break real quick. And if y'all could pass the information upon each other, this is Kelly Williams right here. And the, uh, so, uh, we'll go from there. And at this time, I'll, what's the proper way?
You're going to adjourn the regular session and we'll reconvene at eleven for the workshop.
Okay, I'll re-adjourn the regular session and reconvene at eleven o'clock for the workshop. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Uh, come on up.
Yeah, uh, what's his name?
Sorry about that.
All right.
Mr. Chair, on the agenda for the workshop, we have two items, space needs and, um, the vulnerability assessment slash critical infrastructure list. Uh, want to start with the space needs and the first one, there's two of them that we wanted to bring to your attention and get your input on. Obviously, this is a work session, so there's no voting. Uh, the first one is tax collector. We've been talking with the tax collector, he is interested in acquiring a bank building. Uh, if so, it would be something that we would acquire and then he would pay us, uh, to help offset the costs. He feels it would solve our space problems, it'd solve our, uh, parking problems in the near term. Um, and we're really trying to figure out where we need to be as a county, what properties we need to get. So that five, ten, fifteen years from now, we're positioned for it. We're not scrambling to try and find some. But that, I'd like to turn it over to Kyle.
Good morning. So, uh, I guess we can tell them the bank building. I guess, so the bank building is the, uh, TD Bank building behind Hardee's. They are all familiar, familiar with that one. Um, I have looked at the building, it should accommodate, uh, growth for our office. So we're not moving into a building where we're already maxed out. So we'll have opportunity for growth, um, have opportunity to have more services for, uh, individuals in wheelchairs because it's ground level, uh, in our building, uh, and it solves probably our biggest problem, which is parking. I'm sure that's the one, number one complaint that y'all hear, uh, about, uh, downtown there. We did a rough study, an engineer, and I can get forty-nine parking spots if Swan River Water Management will let me pave the grassy area. And these are all kind of things that we would do our due diligence on. I didn't want to waste your time, my time, doing all that research and you at least not say, okay, you know, at least not give me the beginning of the, an okay process. Um, I need to borrow money from the county to, to buy the building, uh, refurbish it. And my plan is to use any, any of your money to, uh, reimburse the county every year.
And what's your average, turn back to the county?
Um, around two hundred thousand. I mean, this year was a hundred and seventy-eight. I bought, you know, brand new computers for everybody in our office, so I won't have to buy that again for several years. So, uh, we're averaging, I mean, I think we've, over fifteen years, it's been close to six or seven million dollars we've given in the county, uh, for our unspent revenue, so I'm averaging about two hundred thousand.
You know, like you said, you know, it's not so much your space because you have certain days that are busy, ones that aren't.
Correct.
But it's more, like you said, people being able to get in there, you know, walk up there. And that drive-through is rough too.
Well, I mean, there's, yeah, there's thirty-eight parking spots in front of our building and we don't even own the parking spot. I mean, there's, ten years ago, the city had a festival on a Friday and shut down the whole park.
And thirty-three of them are full when they come to pay, when the eighty-two people come pay their taxes.
Correct. I mean, we, I mean, I'm, you know, fifty-four thousand customers a year.
What, what was your, uh, I, I want to know, because I know people, I was talking to somebody last night, said, oh, God, they're so crowded, crowded up there, crowded, crowded. So what I think it's more that people come on a certain day. What's your average? You, you know it probably in your head, you're so good at numbers, but you know, what is your average wait? Like, what is your average wait now?
Uh, this year it's about twenty minutes.
Okay.
Um, and last year was the tick, uh, lower than that, so. I'm averaging about twenty minute waits. And that's, I mean, that's with, you know, two to four hundred customers a day, depending on what day it is. Mondays are busier.
Comparably, comparatively to other counties, that's pretty good.
I think twenty minutes is not bad, but I'd like for it to be smaller, obviously.
So David, do you have any thoughts of what we would do with the bottom floor of the annex?
Yeah, right now, um, we have space issues in our office. Uh, we've talked with, uh, the property appraiser about his office. Uh, we still have, all the things is going down in the basement that we've got to resolve. And we want to find a home for Guardian and Light'em so we no longer have to pay rent, uh, for their space. So if the board is interested in doing this, that would be the first thing I would recommend doing is getting with Jeff Hampton, getting with everybody and figuring out what is the best utilization of the space moving forward for when they move out.
I, I know I've heard in the past that Jeff and Kyle kind of needs to be together. Is that close enough? I mean, is that?
Well, I've, I've talked. Yeah, Jeff, we, we've talked to Jeff about it. Um, we both now, everything is internet based, so it makes it a little easier. Um, and not with the plan, if we can fit, I also offered him, you know, from March, January through March, a, a table, uh, in their office to handle homestead applications and that stuff. So, I mean, that's really, I think, our major point where we overlap is their homestead and RPM and stickers. So if the plan works out, man, I, I plan to have a space for him, you know, during that time if, if needed, if he wants to use it.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, a new building, yes, sir. Yeah, we've measured it and I have thirteen stations right now. And just doing a simple measurement from one wall to the other wall, uh, I can get about fourteen stations. So of course, if we make a, a U shape, we can probably even get more. Um, but that would be down the road, you know, engineer, have to look at it, so, so forth, so.
Kyle, so the, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm worried about the parking now. How many employees you got?
I have twenty-three. There's fifteen.
Is that gonna take up twenty-three of them spaces?
No, sir, no, sir, there's fifteen spots in the back, um, already there. So of the forty-nine additional spots that I could get, I would need eight of those, so that'd be forty-one. So forty-one customer spots strictly for my building, not the thirty-eight that I have to share with the courthouse, the city and the other buildings, so.
That was my only concern.
Yes, sir.
With your employees.
Correct.
Taking up parking places, you know.
That's the first thing I looked at. I mean, it's, you know, it's, there's fifteen spots in the back and so I need eight additional.
I didn't really know there were parking spots in the back.
Yeah, yeah. And also, I mean, it has five drive-through lines and then two, two saves, two vaults in there, so it's, I mean, it's set up for, you know.
Set it for all the money, right?
All the money.
So what are we looking at price-wise for this building?
Um, it's currently listed at about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, so it's about eight thousand square foot building. I mean, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, I, I put, you know, once we, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a true number, Commissioner Ford, yet, because I didn't want to go down that road until you at least said, do the research, but I anticipate one point two maybe. You know, I don't know, paving's real expensive, the black gold, so, um.
So the, the, back to the parking, if, uh, yeah, black gold is very expensive.
Yeah.
So if we don't, if Flora says we can't pave that, the grassy lot, I mean, can't we just organize parking in, in the grass?
Definitely an option, right? I mean, it's definitely an option when it comes time to look at it.
We got county employees park at the church in the grass.
Yeah.
And you can park on grass.
And, and if you got rid of, if you got rid of me, you could get rid of that grassy lot, because then you'll free up twenty-three spots.
Yeah, right, right. We could save that money.
At twenty thousand dollars a year, yeah.
We don't like you.
There is actually a sidewalk that splits the grassy lot, goes all the way out.
So if anything have occurred where you leave on both sides.
And that's all the kind of stuff we would look at.
We can just build a bridge from post office up there.
That's right.
All right, y'all done sparked the nerve down here, go ahead, Chris.
Kyle, I would strongly recommend before, before you entertain the paving, you're probably going to trigger a permitting process with potential bonds, et cetera.
Sure, absolutely.
Just be, we'll be happy to help that. We've got guys on staff that can fit, calculate that real quick for you.
And, uh, perfect, because I know nothing about it.
So you says earlier, Kyle, you got an engineer helping you?
I just had some, an engineer sketch it out on paper. So it's nothing official, but just on the sketch, it's forty-nine. Total spots, not counting the fifteen in the back.
If you got fifteen, you'll have more than you do now because most of those spots are taken up by other.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's twenty-three spots right now without doing anything, not counting the fifteen in the back, twenty-three. I need eight of those for, for staff, so I mean, I would need additional parking. Right. And the parking is, if we can't get parking there, then the whole deal is off. I mean, I can't, you know, I can't do anything without parking. I'm not gonna move into a worse situation.
And in my mind, really and truthfully, the space isn't a big a deal as the parking.
Correct, I mean, that's, that's.
People can't get up there, they can't wait in line, you know?
Correct.
And Kyle, I'm sorry, Rock.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll.
Like me and you talked, uh, previously, uh, in the future, as the county continues to grow, like other communities, uh, I see satellite offices, you know, I know Jeff's got a, uh, one of his employees that goes to Fort White, I think, on Wednesdays. Fort White's continuing to grow, it's gonna be a hub to some degree. Uh, and you know, every community you go to, you know, all these strip plazas, you see.
Sure.
You know, your storefronts out there. And, uh, in, uh, Tallahassee Tuesday, don't go down, uh, uh, what's that? Thomasville Road, because you'll get the urge to want to, it says tax collector and that building horrendous.
Yeah.
It makes this look like a garage.
That's Norris Malloy.
Yeah, so they must pick, pick up a lot more taxes. But, uh, I think you just need to do your diligence and, uh, we'll see where it lasts.
I'll say, well, I mean, I'll get the whole package put together and come back, you know, I mean, it's.
David.
Yes, sir.
So where would this money come from to buy this building at this time?
So at this point in time, it's not in your budget. Uh, you were talking about, uh, he was talking about worst case scenario, one point two million. Uh, you could borrow it or you could borrow it from yourselves. Um, he's looking at over three years, being able to pay at least five hundred thousand of it. Of course, his money is fee dependent, fee driven, so a lot, what happens with property taxes affects his business. But he's pretty confident, at least he can get through the next three years of about five hundred thousand paid back to the county. So if you borrow it from yourselves, you're paying yourself the interest. If you borrow it from a bank, you're paying the bank the interest. Uh, we borrowed the Mutt Two loans for the, uh, County Road Six and Burley Road from First Federal. So it could be something as simple as just going to First Federal and taking out a loan.
And Joel, I guess in the near future, is this even legal in government to do? You know?
So Kyle's correct, just like he can't take on a mortgage, right? So what Kyle's trying to do is, is find a way to have the county fund the facility and then for him to ultimately own it. We'll work on it. It can't be a mortgage in the conventional, you can't call it that, but that's really what he's describing, right?
I mean, ultimately, I want y'all to own the building.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm just going to, I can own the building, but I want y'all to own it. And I'm gonna pay for it, or pay for it as much as I can.
So what he's really talking about there would be sort of a lease.
At least own, but only own it.
But the, the, the thought process there too is, we, we provide his space to him anyway, right? What he is allowed to do that other constitutionsals aren't, is he can go out and acquire branch offices.
Got you.
And that actually gives him a unique power where the tax collector's office can actually own real estate. Y'all know that most of our other constitutionsals don't do that. So, and he can own real estate through leaseholds, he can have leaseholds. What I would suggest is the board just evaluate it in terms of, is it a good idea from a, a, a function standpoint? Does it, does it enhance the functionality of the annex? Is it good for the tax collector? Is it something that you guys feel is a good idea? We can work out how the dollars and cents work. I think the tax, do, do you return money at the end of the year? You, you're all fee based.
Yeah.
So, so I mean, you could always have some sort of an agreement between the tax collectors office, say, hey, we agree for the next five years, we're gonna return any year in money to, to offset. So we can work out that deal, but it can't be a mortgage, it can't be anything that evidences debt.
Right. And the, I mean, the good thing about my office too is, you know, we, we serve everybody in the state. So we have, everybody who uses the service is gonna help, gonna pay for it. All these people who come from Miami Dade, they're gonna pay for, help pay for our new building. Everybody comes from Swanee, they're gonna help pay for our new building.
Now, I want to ask you a question about that. Were there certain times you don't allow out of state or something?
Um, I didn't. Yeah, I didn't as of Monday, I do now, um, not for.
I thought you didn't allow.
No, I, I didn't allow it.
I was about to say.
I was three short, you know, for the past year. We got those three in, they're trained up, we're fully staffed now. So now we did make the decision, it's kind of ironic timing, but made the decision to, uh, open back up for everybody.
He just tried some way to pay for that.
Yeah. You can put out some tents out front.
Just for full transparency, as our building, that will impact our operational budgets on Kevin's side in terms of maintenance, custodial.
So David, I support it, but I would like to see a cost analysis and a breakdown, how you plan to fund it and.
Right.
Come back for us.
And support it, all them, all them hidden costs, as it were.
So we didn't want to go forward without you telling us that's a direction.
You said there's two options, you can either, and I don't know if Joel stepped on this, but you can either borrow it from the bank or you can borrow it from ourselves.
You have reserves, you could borrow it from your reserves and pay your reserves back.
Pay the reserve back and the interest would be paid back to the reserves the taxpayer's on.
Correct.
I, I don't know if that's normal or whatever, that sounds a lot better than paying it to somebody else. Rather pay the taxpayer back their money than.
But we would have to run that analysis, what makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you guys would only pay for three years? After the three years.
No, he can guarantee three years.
He can guarantee three years.
Right.
And after that, you could probably guarantee another three?
Everything depends on what the governor does and the legislature does with property.
I got you, I got you.
Because again, his revenue is driven on a percentage basis.
He might have shut down half of it.
We're trying to get more fees to help offset that.
Okay, all right, all right. So he doesn't want to over commit and say, I got this, and then the governor eliminates property taxes and he has no revenue.
Support for this?
You're just in a workshop.
Yeah. I'm gonna move forward with getting all the due diligence, all the calls together, and we'll get everything finalized and come back for a final presentation.
Look forward to it.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
So the next one is, um, also looking long-term, what's the county gonna do for office space, for growth? Um, and it is, whoops, why is this not working? There we go, whoop, Five Points Elementary School. As you know, the school has closed down Five Point Elementary School. The school district is interested in giving it to either the city or the county. The city and county have been in conversation. The city and county have been in conversations with each other and with Suwannee Four Seas about how that property could be used. If the school board gives it to the city, the city's willing to work with us, I would hope. And if the school board would give it to us, we would work with the city and Suwannee Four Seas. But we need to know that you're even interested in it. Here's a picture of Five Points Elementary School. As you can see, we own a substantial amount of property in that area. The red area on the bottom is the school board owned property. A lot of it is vacant. So there is open space as well. It's adjacent to one of your parks, to your public works facility and your jail. And this is the plan that the school and Five Points, here at Suwannee Valley Four Seas and everyone else has, um, talked about. The areas shaded out would be set aside for Suwannee Valley Four Seas for a daycare facility. We're kind of thinking the possible middle one would be city. And the outline one, which is their administrative offices, their cafeteria, the kitchen, could be county. Our interested in, our interest in the cafeteria is that could make, it has a stage, it could make a very good meeting space for the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, but again, we don't know tomorrow what we have to do. We will make use of the building day one. But this is really planning for where do you want to be ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? When you've got to make some decisions on growth and how the county's structuring and growth. You've talked before about a county complex out on Lake Jeffrey downtown. Uh, this could provide land for that.
That, to me, this is like a blessing, because we've got the County Road Department right there. You got, this is central to county. It's, it's easy parking. Not gonna be a lot of people up there going to see somebody else. They're gonna be coming to see the county city or four eight, so.
So my only concern.
I think it's a good building.
So my only concern would be the built part of the building we're not using right now today. I guess when I'm looking at here, there's gonna be some of the buildings gonna be stayed vacant. What is the cost of the maintenance of that vacant space at this time?
So we do have the revenue or the maintenance costs that the school board has been paying. And we can provide that to the board if board's interested in moving forward. Suwannee Valley Four Seas, and they're here, if you'd like to introduce yourselves. They want to be a tenant. So whoever ultimately would own it, whether it be the city or county, they would want to be a tenant of that. I don't anticipate it sitting empty. I anticipate us using it until we figure out long-term what our ultimate objective.
So is there any discussion at all on what time we was talking about maybe doing a program or welding or some kind of, oh, school for, uh, careers, career school, you know?
So I've been kind of talking, so I've been talking with Ms. Harris at the city a good bit. And we've got some programs that we want to try to implement to have there, some things coming up. So we're gonna try to utilize every space that's there. Um, she's wanting to work with us as well on a lot of stuff too. She's more than willing, if we get it, I can work with her. If they get it, she's willing to work with us on whatever we decide we want to do with it. They're really, really willing to work with us on it. So I think.
Some of the programs are for, uh.
For the youth. All the stuff that I want to implement is gonna be for the youth, for our kids in the community, for sure.
So that's the advantage of working with Four Seas and the city is that helps, none of us have planned for this. This was not something that's built in our budget. It's not in our work plan. I know we like to do our plan and plan our work. This is to plan our work for future years. This is not for planning our work now. But just like with the reporter building, we're gonna make use of it. We're not just gonna let it sit in.
When you got a place this big that's offered up, you, you gotta take it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any problem taking it. I just want to make sure we got a plan for it.
Because they're looking for a decision spring.
And I, uh, personally, I went over, met a tour of it, if you want to say, with Todd Whittaker. It's, it's out, it, it's a good, uh, opportunity. Uh, I'm not exactly a hundred percent. We'll, we'll talk about shaded areas when, if that time comes. But the, uh, for Suwannee Valley Four Seas, I think it's a great, there's twenty-three or four acres, I believe.
Twenty-three acres.
It's a lot larger than I ever thought it was.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was that big either.
It was, uh, but, but the structure, the bones of it is unbelievable. But in the, the portion to the left that y'all have seen shaded, that's your newer stuff. And, uh, it can go in operation tomorrow, uh, it looks like to me. But it's, it's, uh, I think it's, uh, definitely, but just like Mr. Ford in, indicated earlier, from here on out, we won't, we need real numbers, because that building, they mowed the grass for us to go take a tour. But it hadn't been, you know, there, there, there's twenty-three acres, comes with a cost. I think Mr. Pitt could back me on that. The, uh, uh, so, uh, you know, likes, there's, there's, there's a lot to take in mind. But I still think it's a, it can be a, uh, as I said to the administration of the school board, I said, this has got to be a slam dunk deal for us. So, you know, there, uh, but we all understand the reason why they want to put it in our hands. So, uh, I think it, uh, I think we make it happen. But we'll see.
Yeah. So we'll move forward.
Yes.
Sounds like you got support for it.
Yep.
Some good businesses right there.
Just need to know what's going, what, what some of the costs is gonna be before we need to bail off any.
Well, and that's what we'll do over the next few months is we'll put all that together.
And David, just before we go on, we all realize that we're not gonna be occupying this building a hundred percent in the next twelve months, for any rich reason whatsoever. My point is, is that that building is operating right now with electricity. Why, you cannot turn the power and the air conditioner off in certain areas. You're gonna have your mess on your hands. So when the, when the carrying costs, if you want to call it, we, we need that upfront, because that's gonna be an impact to the budget as it stands today.
It would, because it's not in the budget.
And that's, uh, in the, just the basic mowings and, and what have you, the, uh, water bills, you know, there's, uh, there's a lot to keep in mind. But the, uh, I still think it's definitely a positive avenue. I wish this was on this plate before we did lecture reporter, but that's what.
Be wonderful.
But go ahead.
Well, I, I just want to say, you know, we need, we need a plan.
Yep, that's right.
Because we all know, two hundred thousand dollars before a while, it's gonna have to go away with some of the services we provide.
Yep.
And a plan means it doesn't need to be hurried like.
Yep.
Right. We're looking for five, ten years out. We're not looking for tomorrow. We'll make use of the space we have, but again, we, we need a plan for five years, ten years, fifteen years.
I think I see a little closet back here to the far right over here. Looks like, says Dale Williams right there.
Well, we do have to give him an office, so.
Don't let Dale Williams out there ever cost too much money to give.
At least he's got an entrance to the back, the, the back of the property, you know what I mean? Say, oh Dale, but we, we, we love you Dale.
And it does have a full kitchen that is, uh, industrial, in great shape. Everything works, everything functions, next to the kitchen. So it can even be used for sheltering, should you need to.
Is anybody going in there and kind of running the water or anything?
Yeah.
You know, when things sit still for too long, it just, you cause more damage than when it's actually in use every day, so.
A bathroom was working the other day.
You want to avoid that, just so that, you know, if somebody's going in there, just turn the water, let it run for a little bit, keep it from, uh.
Not only, answer your question, not only did we go through it, but they went through it with their maintenance people.
Okay.
Can she tell you what that means?
Okay.
We did, yeah. Um, so.
Ma'am.
It's, it's been sitting. I'm sorry. Michelle Ward, I'm the executive director at Suwannee Valley Four Seas. And we greatly appreciate the opportunity to possibly use some of the space. Uh, our, one of our main facilities here in Lake City, we were notified that the property owner, we leased the facility. And, uh, that's our head start center that's on Columbia Avenue. And, uh, they notified us that, uh, they're going to be selling the facility. So, um, and so our lease is up in June twenty twenty-six. So for us, it's kind of more of an, an urgent kind of situation to be able to, you know, if we're going to be able to use the space, to be able to get there. Um, so, but we're, we're looking at, uh, use of seventeen classrooms, possibly the media center, use of a portion of the kitchen area. As we looked at the space, uh, in some of the classrooms, the air was on, in others it wasn't. So that might definitely be something that you, as far as maintaining a temperature, of course, now we're in cooler months. So, you know, um, but even reaching eighty degrees some days. But, uh, so potentially that could start, uh, impacting, you know, the condition of the rooms and all. Um, and then just, you know, making sure that things are operational. Um, I know that when we met with Todd Whitaker and, um, uh, the gentleman that's over there, construction, uh, going on right now with the school system, uh, he came.
Fred Gaylord.
Yeah, Mr. Gaylord. He was there as well and assured us that everything, you know, was operational. Um, we also had talked to their maintenance supervisor, Mr. Jernigan. And he assured us that while they were using it, you know, for children and all, that everything was operational. The media center, there was, uh, uh, roof leaking going on in there. And, uh, so there was, uh, carpet was wet and all. But, uh, they think that that was from a condensation issue. And so, um, hopefully too, with the cooler months, we haven't been there in a couple of weeks. But, um, in the cooler months, um, hopefully that wouldn't be as much of an issue. But there definitely was, um, a leak issue there with the roof. For us, I know one of the needs that we would have that's pretty big is, um, of course, we serve first to five-year-olds. So, uh, the children are on the floor a lot and the carpet, the flooring is old. So, uh, in most of the seventeen classrooms, um, it would need, you know, new carpet. Um, we would be willing to do painting. Some of the rooms needed painting. Um, but for us, the, the biggest issue was the flooring. Um, and then having separation of the facilities for safe, safety reasons. So maybe some fencing, uh, going through there, you know, the area somehow to separate, uh, the, the portion of the facilities that maybe we would, you know, be operating. So we would have about fifty staff there, uh, thirty-four teachers, three cooks and thirteen support staff. Anybody have any questions?
The thing that sounds like to me, we need to have Donnie go out there and maybe even Troy do an assessment. And put together a, a cost to renovate this stuff, because this sounds like we gotta maybe do a roof right off the bat.
Well, at the end of the day, we don't know if the district give it to the city.
Right.
And we have to negotiate with the city, or the district will give it to us and see.
Yeah, but if we accept it.
I mean, they may give it to the city.
We're on the hook for this one to renovate it, so. So we need to know what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Ms. Ward, how much do y'all pay a month now?
Uh, fifty-six hundred dollars lease payment.
Is that including electricity?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was two thousand. Just kidding.
She's a Giles now, she'll give it to you.
I know her daddy was.
She'll end up free. It'll be, you can give it.
He coached me when I was about seven. The, uh, the, uh, is that including electricity?
No, sir.
So fifty-six hundred plus electricity is what you guys do? Okay. Pretty hefty fee.
Yes.
Hey, you're covering the cost of electric for the whole building right now?
Yes, for the facility that is being sold.
So how much is that around a month, just for electric?
Ooh, um, I'm gonna make a guess. I think it's around twelve hundred. Yeah.
Not, yeah, not put word in the mouth, but you're not paying for the whole electric bill over here on that whole complex.
Sorry about the complex that currently have.
Yes.
Yeah, correct, correct. But is that what you're saying, Rocky?
Oh, I thought she was talking about the, uh, the school there. So you're not in the school yet?
Oh, no.
Well, I know, I know some of the schools have four Cs already, you know?
Yeah.
I know Fort White, Fort White has a four C's there. You're on the school round.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
So the point of this is to find out if you're even interested in suing it.
Yes.
District know it, city.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
We'd be crazy enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions on space needs for now? Obviously, we're in the very beginning of looking at this stuff and it's not something we're gonna do overnight. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to North Florida Professional Services and, oh.
Real quick, while they're on the way up there, David, uh, as far as the space needs, we're dealing with the court services.
Court services, yes. Uh, Mr. Kirby's already started his crews, uh, looking at how to get it in. Donnie's gonna be taping it off to make sure the air conditioning works correctly. Todd's looking at wiring the building. Um, yeah, Kevin's got that underway.
And then, uh, I heard you say the other day you're working Dale Williams and about his office space too.
Right. When we acquired the property where the hospital authority is, one of the terms of that acquisition was we would give a home to Lake Shore Hospital Authority for both, uh, Mr. Williams and, uh, Ms. Markham. Joel and I met with them, talked about terms of a lease and what it would look like, that we are working on.
Yeah. Okay, good.
They would like to stay in the hospital authority building as long as they could. Realistically, where they're at, that could be a while. But one of the first things Donnie's gonna do is tear out the off, tear out their meeting space, get rid of the split flooring. So they're gonna want to start having their meetings at the Duval Center. And they tend to meet on Mondays, which is a day that we typically don't use that facility.
Okay.
What?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm a little dumb down here. Didn't, didn't that get voted down?
What?
Hospital Authority?
Which?
What vote you talk, what, what vote, what vote of the hundred and twenty-five votes you talking about?
Why are we providing office space if that's been voted down and so it's been?
Well, no, they actually, the last time they met, they actually gave us the property. We now own the property. Joel has the deed.
But we agreed to provide an office space for them.
So where the confusion comes in is there's empty lots that are out there.
Yeah, but can.
That we were interested in. They did not give us the empty lots.
But we don't own the hospital, okay? It's just the, uh, executive offices.
Yeah. So we own.
I'll leave it alone.
You, you have Barnell, you have Barnell fixing the.
Okay, long story short, we own where the hospital authority is, we own the building behind it where the records retention is. Records retentions we acquired for Mr. Swisher to be able to store his records, so that we don't have to lease space for record storage. Yes, Joel has the deed.
Yes, we've recorded the deed. Yes, sir.
So the building across the street that's two stories is now owned by the college.
Okay.
The physical therapy building is still owned by the hospital authority, but is gonna be a project with Palms Medical. And then the hospital itself is something they're working out with Meridian.
Okay. I follow you now.
And the empty lots, I don't know what they're gonna do with.
We'll take all the money for every day.
Kevin, there was a referendum on the ballot.
Yeah.
Last year, whether to keep hospital authority or not, and that was six, seven percent, but the hospital authority is still getting paid by the state.
Got you.
Any money we spend at our beef and dish at once and all.
Hey, I'm pulling my money. Wait a minute.
Ms. Barnell, Stiles will be giving the update on that, uh, due to our, uh, visit Tuesday in Tallahassee here in the next portion of the meeting.
All right, good deal.
Uh, go ahead, Brandon. You got five minutes.
So, um, good morning, Chair, members of the board. I'm Brandon Stubbs. I'm the funding and grants manager for North Florida Professional Services. Uh, we're, we're here to present, um, the vulnerability assessment, where we're at, what, um, what we're looking for. And some, um, basically what's gonna be taking place in the future. Uh, so we'll discuss, uh, governing state legislation, the resilient Florida grant program, the state, uh, involvement through the Columbia County Vulnerability Assessment. We're gonna review the funding and scope, critical asset definitions, uh, current preliminary, uh, critical asset list, as well as present preliminary flood data modeling, and then get your input. Now it's time I'll turn it over to Mr. Trevor and he can present the.
All right. Good morning, board. Um, uh, my name is Trevor Noyes. I'm a project manager with North Florida Professional Services. And, uh, working on this project in Columbia County, Columbia County Vulnerability Assessment. So if you flip over to page three, the presentation in front of you, take a look at the state legislation. First off, uh, you'll note in May, May twelfth of twenty twenty-one, Governor DeSantis backed and signed Senate Bill nineteen fifty-four into law. Um, this is the legislation that prioritizes a approach statewide to ensure Florida's coastal and inland resilience. The bill is mandating local governments to perform comprehensive statewide and local vulnerability assessments to identify risks associated with flooding and sea level result, sea level rise for coastal and inland communities. Completion of the local vulnerability assessments is a prerequisite for future funding for resilience. So this is something that is a high priority for the county until this vulnerability. So this is something that is a high priority for the county until this vulnerability assessment is complete. That's what unlocks resiliency funding for future implementation projects. And then Florida Statute 380.093 was drafted to outline the requirements of the vulnerability assessments. Flipping to page four, the Senate Bill 1954 established the Resilient Florida Grant Program. This is administered by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, or DEP. And the Resilient Florida Grant Program provides funding for the following activities: local vulnerability assessments and adaptation planning, which is what we're covering for you all today. And then they provide funding for implementation of resiliency projects that are identified during the vulnerability assessment, adaptation planning. It's important to note, and I want to emphasize, that implementation funding is once again not provided until these vulnerability assets and adaptation plans are complete. Flipping over to page five, we'll take a look at some of the project background and funding. So you may be wondering what areas of the county are covered under the Columbia County Vulnerability Assessment. This particular assessment covers unincorporated areas of the county and the town of Fort White. The city of Lake City is seeking funding for their own assessment currently, and then county assets within the city limits are covered. So you all, as the county, unincorporated areas outside of the county, town of Fort White, Ellisville, they're all covered. Basically, everything outside the city of Lake City's limits, but the county's assets within the city limits are covered. So county assets and everything outside the city limits. Who's paying for the project? The Resilient Florida Grant Program has provided a $450,000 grant to conduct the vulnerability assessment along with the adaptation plan. So this vulnerability assessment and adaptation plan is completely funded through the state by the Resilient Florida Grant Program, and it is a pass-through. So to take a little bit more in-depth look at this project's funding and just comparing the funding received for Columbia County's project compared to other counties in the area, we can see there at the top on page six that Columbia County received $450,000 as a stated. This does cover the vulnerability assessment and the adaptation plan, the two components. Swanee County received $482,000 for this, a vulnerability assessment, $210,000 grant, and then they received an additional grant to cover their adaptation plan afterwards in the amount of $272,000. Gilchrist County received $400,000 for their vulnerability assessment. That does not cover their adaptation plan, and they will be seeking additional funding for the adaptation plan. And then you'll see Dixie County, $969,000, which covers their vulnerability assessment and the adaptation plan. I wanna pay close attention to this table on this chart. We broke this down, cost per land area and cost per capita. And you'll see, no matter how we look at it, Columbia County received the least amount of money for this study, whether you look at it per land area or per capita. This was money just provided from the state. We didn't have any hand in seeking the grant. This was the grant funding that's provided to you all to cover this study. So we are working within those means, doing the best job that we can to produce the vulnerability assessment and the adaptation plan for you all. Moving on to slide number four, we'll take a look at the project scope, which is ultimately what this project is encompasses from top to bottom. The grant work plan outlines a list of tasks, which are all bulleted here for you, which the first step being acquiring background data. This is the task that right now we're nearing completion on. That task requires us to develop a critical asset list, which is mostly acquired, and we'll take a better look at towards the end of this meeting today. Topographic data across the entire Columbia County to be able to perform the flood modeling. And then we also need to acquire flood data, which the topo data and flood data have all been acquired at this point. We've incorporated those into GIS. That being the case, the following two tasks, the exposure analysis and sensitivity analysis, will both take all the data that we've acquired, develop a flood model across several different flooding scenarios, which Brandon will cover here shortly. But modeling is in progress on both of those two tasks as well. After all of the modeling has been done and we've gotten all the data that we need, ultimately what we'll end up doing is identifying focus areas. So the map that you all see with Brandon shortly shows areas of the county that are vulnerable to flooding based on your topography, your soil types, and all of those things. And it pinpoints where your critical assets that you defined are located on the map. So you can very easily see if a critical asset has the potential to flood. That's what the first part of, the first three steps are ultimately covering, is determining those areas that may be vulnerable and then taking a closer look at it in step four. Finally, we'll be producing a final vulnerability assessment report, which is where we're gonna take all of our data, put it together in one big package, essentially all the maps, all the tables, everything is compiled, and will be sent back to DEP for review and incorporation into their much larger statewide vulnerability assessment, which once again, covered by Senate Bill 1954 and backed by the governor. After all that's complete, we'll do a final presentation with you all, explaining what all of our findings are, which it will be much longer than five minutes, unfortunately. But we'll take a look at all of those things, everything that we found throughout this study. And once it's all been presented to you all, we will essentially inform the local mitigation strategy of all of our findings and then develop the adaptation plan. Moving to slide number eight or page eight here. This is kind of the point of the meeting today, now that we've defined all this background information. We want to explain to you all what the critical asset identification is. Florida Statute 380.093 outlines the four asset classes. You may be wondering, well, we own a lot of things here in the county. What essentially can be incorporated into this study? Does it include, you know, houses that we know flood and things like that? And Florida Statute here defines what those asset classes are. The first being transportation assets and evacuation routes, which covers any airports, bridges, bus terminals, ports, major roadways, marinas, rail facilities, and railroad bridges. Critical infrastructure, which covers your wastewater treatment facilities, lift stations, stormwater treatment facilities and pump stations, drinking water facilities, water utility conveyance systems, electric production and supply facilities, solid and hazardous waste facilities, military installations, communications facilities, and disaster debris management sites. The third asset class is the critical community and emergency facilities, which covers schools, colleges, universities, community centers, correctional facilities, disaster recovery centers, emergency medical service facilities, emergency operations centers, fire stations, healthcare facilities, hospitals, law enforcement facilities, local government facilities, logistical staging areas, affordable public housing, risk shelter inventory, and state government facilities. And the final asset class covers natural, cultural, and historical resources, which are things like conservation lands, parks, shorelines, surface waters, wetlands, and historical and cultural assets. So in short, a lot of information to explain that the statute defines anything that can be considered a critical asset in those lists. And in summary, while you may have some of these, what is ultimately covered in the vulnerability asset are the assets owned or maintained by the county or the municipalities within your study. So for example, a private airport, while it may be an important asset in the area, is not owned or maintained by the county and would not necessarily be covered under the county's vulnerability assessment. Flipping to slide number nine, this is just a quick table that identifies the assets that we've defined so far, based on asset class. You'll see those same four asset classes we just went over, which are your critical community and emergency facilities, your critical infrastructure facilities, natural, cultural, and historical resources, and transportation assets and evacuation routes. And there are cumulative totals for each of those right there. The other handout that you have actually breaks this down even farther, and we have a list of essentially everything that we've acquired so far. And I believe Brandon is gonna take it from here and explain what we're doing with these assets for you all.
Yeah, so those assets are assets that NIPS, your county staff, have all verified. And we know that these 168 critical assets are there. They've been verified. So one thing we will be asking you as commissioners, as we brought a map, it has identification of where all these assets are located. Y'all may know of additional assets that maybe we or staff may have not missed, or there might be things that you want to inquire about. Is it a critical asset? And that's why we have the map, so that if you do have things that you see that are not on this list, we would want you to go mark them on the map where they're at and what that is. So we make sure that we cover anything that y'all may see that wasn't part of the 168 critical assets we identified. Relating to flow modeling, so there's actually six different models that we do. We do a current model, a 2040 model, and a 2070 model. And that's a model of the 100-year 24-hour storm event and a 500-year 24-hour storm event. And these models, each one of these models has to be hand-developed in GIS. So there's software modeling that we have to do, that we have to model each one of these. And that's where you get your exposure model, basically. Here's your critical assets. Here's where it's gonna flood. At what point does it flood? Does it flood on a current 100-year flood? Or does it flood at all? Or is it flooding only in the 2070-500-year modeling? So that's where you get that. And then your sensitivity analysis will identify the most critical of those facilities and at what point it floods and how critical are those, or how sensitive to flooding it will be in the future. So again, you have rainfall-induced 100-year 24-hour storm event and 500-year 24-hour storm event. And then the map that I have that we're gonna put on the screen and the map that's there is the 2070-500-year 24-hour storm event. So it's kind of like a major, major flood. Now, one thing I do want to point out, while Patrick's bringing up that map, is this is a, this is not your FEMA flood map. So when you look at it and you see how this flooding area, don't get excited to, because this is not regulatory. So these maps are not FEMA flood maps. They're not gonna be utilized for flood insurance or to amend your flood maps. So we don't wanna get these maps mistaken with anything that FEMA may do or anything that's gonna be regulatory in nature. So I don't know if it's possible to zoom in.
So Brandon, are you saying that this looks apparently more in depth than FEMA's?
This is, yes. So FEMA's modeling is a, based upon a current 100-year, 500-year flood event. But these models are specifically taking into consideration the future and like, there's 2040 and the 2070, and it takes into consideration certain parameters of, you know, whether it be sea level rise, future events of storms and things like that, that yes, these maps are way more intense in their modeling than what you would see as far as a FEMA current model like.
So which map will your insurance and your building department look at?
Not this one. They'll look at your FEMA. So none of that will change. Just this map will not affect anything regulatory in nature. So...
So what is the benefit of having this map?
This, so the purpose of this is to show your critical assets and what critical assets could potentially be subject to flooding in certain stages and at certain times in the future. So let's say you have a lift station and the modeling shows that maybe in 2070, under a 100-year flood event, that your lift station would be underwater. Well, that would now become a critical asset that would be identified in your adaptation plan, and that would be able to seek funding in the future to maybe lift that, yeah, to lift it up so that it wouldn't flood.
It's far future-changing. In other words, if you got a critical asset that in 2060 is gonna go underwater, if something happens to it or you're just getting ready for the future.
So how do you predict that far?
I don't know. I mean, that don't even seem possible to me.
Through modeling parameters and things like that, it is...
The sun's gonna get about 150 miles closer by that time, too.
There's certain, yeah, there's certain things within the statute that we have to account for. So those parameters are kind of guided to us through the state and through statute. But so we plug those into our modeling. We take in like soils and topography and everything. And once we plug those into the model and we run the model, then that's what it outputs. And again, there's a lot of blue in this map, but you understand, this model is so sensitive, it predicts flooding at a fraction of an inch. So some of these areas, it might be very light blue. That might represent maybe in a 500-year, a 500-year 24-hour storm event, you might have less than a inch of standing water. So it's not that, you know, you're gonna have three foot, four foot of standing water. Yeah, some places you might, but I mean, is the model so sensitive, it's predicting fractions of an inch of flooding.
So refresh me on what you think. The reasoning is for this is so that in the future, when we're gonna change infrastructure or build new infrastructure, this is gonna help us do that for the people that are gonna be here in 27.
For current infrastructure, yes. So anything that you have that's listed as a critical asset and it is shown on any of these modelings that it could be subject to flooding. It allows you to, once we get the study done, have the adaptation plan. And so once the sensitivity analysis is done, it will identify what critical assets are most vulnerable to flooding. And it'll create like a list, one to 168 of what assets, like this is number one. This one right here, this is the most susceptible to flooding. Two, this is the next susceptible to flooding and so forth. And what you'll do is you'll go down your asset list and you'll apply for resiliency funds to address the flooding issues for those critical assets.
So it just gives us a map that says, all right, we don't wanna build anything more here, because this is, or even do a new asset in a spot. Would it do that too?
Yeah, you could utilize it for that or utilize it for the fact that, you know, under this scenario, there might be flooding here, so maybe we wanna build it up.
Right, somewhere else or up. Yeah, okay.
What it also does, it opens up the door for future BS, you know? Because what, it's no more different than FEMA map that just come out, correct? And all this right here, this is bull. I mean, it's nothing you guys are doing, but what you're doing, you're opening up FEMA. We can't even get DEP to do a damn vulnerability, I mean, do a study as to where you do the recharge. You know, man, I'll be gone in 2070.
But y'all doing a great job. Hey, North Florida says...
That's the biggest face paper.
They say something, I believe.
Yeah. Well...
If I can speak to it a little bit more, I think the governor's hand behind the resiliency effort. As you all know, very vulnerable to hurricanes, whether we like it or not, statistics are showing sea levels. Sea levels don't necessarily play a huge role on the accountability of the project, but what we are seeing is more severe storms as time goes on. So these 2040 and 2070 models, take into account more severe storms in the future that can ultimately impact the assets. that can ultimately impact the assets that you do currently have. So it's the governor's way of helping us be a little bit less reactive and a little bit more proactive to these flooding events that affect on here.
How much money the governor's spending on this stuff out here?
I'll stick to the Bible. I tell you though, I understand the sea rise thing. I don't know how long it's been doing. I've had a place, I've been going horseshoe about 45 years and it's still right where it was 45 years ago, when I fished it, right where it was, right where my house was. So, but anyhow, maybe it rises when I'm not there. But, but, so I ain't buying the sea rise thing. But anyhow, and that's not your fault, that's somebody else's. But, but I do understand, especially for waterfront areas where people may put a major asset, because I'm sure somewhere in Cedar Key they had something get hammered. And now the governor has to pay for that and FEMA has to pay for that. And they're all just trying to make it to spend less money in the future. I don't see it a real big deal in Columbia County, but I know it's being done. We got to do it. We got to do it and receive funds. So, hey.
So I get a horseshoe a lot too. So it's like the bathrooms at the park, you know, that park was beautiful and had all the nice amenities and then it got wiped away.
Right.
So this is an example like for horseshoe.
Well, it's like horseshoe. They built parks where that park shouldn't have been, you know?
Go ahead, Brandon. You're doing great.
Well, that's all as far as our presentation, but I do invite the commissioners to go look at the map. It has stars where everything's located with the number that you can identify the critical assets. If you see something on that list that, or don't, more important, don't see something on that list that you think should be on there, we want you to put it on the map so that we can make sure we include it.
Can we have that map?
Yes.
Okay. Can we take it to the board council room and they can come by if their pleasure and take a look?
Yes, sir. The one thing that I will say is we do have a drop dead date that we have to send this stuff to the state. We're planning on submitting that at the end of next week. However, should there not, should some things pop up later on, we can always add them later. So don't feel like you have to rush, but we want to try to the most complete list of what you can to the state by next, in the next week.
Again, when's that drop dead date?
Well, I think it's next Friday.
Okay.
So again, if there is something.
I can look at this and see when my river house is going to go in water. Does it show the river wearing out? Like, no, seriously. Does it show the river like caving away? I mean, because it happens. I know because I got that river out. So it's two or three foot and probably the last 10 years, two, couple foot. So does it show that?
It don't show, it don't, it don't take in consideration like bank erosion, but it does take in consideration the additional rise.
Oh, okay.
Then when y'all dug all them holes up behind your places.
I want you, I got something on my phone I want to show you. A county's out there, I'm not going to talk bad about them, we might need them one day. But they literally, now I'm telling you, I'm going to let you read it and you're going to laugh out loud. They literally put out a report about four years ago when that storm came, that there was going to be a 12-foot storm surge coming in to Swanee, to Swanee. And then that storm surge was going to extend up to Rock Bluff, 50 miles inshore, that the people in Rock Bluff needed to evacuate immediately because the river is going to go out of its bank and go 12-foot high because there's a 12-foot storm surge called for on the Gulf. They literally said that. So I love keeping this out of my phone so I can, I mess with the mayor down there all the time, you know? But it's just sometimes these storms, people say things that aren't going to happen.
That was only a $350,000 vulnerability study that it's.
But I'll tell you, I really do want you to read it. I called the county and I said, wait, whoa, whoa. So you're saying that there's going to be a 12-foot storm surge in Belle, Florida on the river? And he said, yes. And I was like, man, get ready. People were evacuating, literally.
I think I would have to stay just to see that.
I'm going to show it to you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. All right, and at this time we.
Adjourn the workshop and reconvene regular session.
At this time, we're going to adjourn this workshop and reconvene the regular scheduled meeting.
All right, I promise I will go very quickly. I know you guys are probably wanting to go to lunch. If you would prefer, we can move the utility update to the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Is that okay with the board?
There you go.
Okay. I will say at the next utility board meeting, depending on what happens, Scott Stewart is planning to come and give an update on his cornerstone project on the 20th also. So he's planning to be at the meeting the 20th.
That's good because we know who in a lot of us. I get calls on that all the time out of my area.
About what?
Publix.
Mr. Chair, in light of what David just shared, I can do my addition.
Yeah, do your additions now.
Okay, so the ISBA, the Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement, is that satellite annexation. Clay, Martin and I got together, we've started calling it the cornerstone planning area. You have to have a designation for it. You guys can change that if you don't like it, but that's what we're calling it for now. The ISBA is largely complete. We have to adopt it by ordinance. I need to set an adoption hearing. The options, if we want to go light speed, would be to try to do it second meeting of November. I do have newspaper publications issues with that. Alternatively, I would like to do the first meeting in December. Again, this is something that's been heavily vetted publicly. I don't know that it's going to be a controversial issue, so I feel comfortable having it on a morning session. If I could get a motion to attempt to set it for the next meeting and then alternatively set it for the first meeting in December.
So if that's a public hearing, does it have to be a night meeting?
It's not required to be a night meeting. We do typically try to take public interest issues and push them into night meetings, and we can do it at the last meeting in December. That's why I'm kind of telling you guys the whole scope. Whatever you want to do, that's what I'm going to do. I do think I can make the deadline and get it for the second meeting in November, but failing that, I want a backup plan. If the newspaper says no, we can't get it done. So if that's your concern, Commissioner Ford, and I understand that, then I would say either the second meeting in November or the second meeting in December.
Which would be November 20th or December 18th.
Correct. And that would need to be in form of a motion.
I do as a courtesy for the board, ask y'all to tell me to set that adoption hearing and then I get it advertised.
Okay. Okay, so I need that in the form of a motion.
So I need a motion to do, I didn't quite hear it all. I make a motion, we'll do whatever Joel needs to do for that.
So the motion would be to do the second meeting of November or the second meeting of December?
Depending on how quickly I can get it advertised.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. And I assume Joel, that's probably working within the guideline, I mean, the timeframe of Scotts.
It is. We had worked on trying to get it done by the end of the year. I will tell you, the city has a two-step process and Mr. Martin is currently working to work in the same time parameters that we are. So we'll all be approving this at the same time and it'll go into effect by the end of the year.
All right, David.
So the next one is the AT&amp;T Managed Internet Renewal for $29,689. Faster speeds, less money.
I move we approve AT&amp;T Managed Internet Renewal.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed.
As you know, Shane Morgan is funded through an EMPA and an EMPG grant. They unfortunately are on different calendars. Just got the EMPG grant. This is the approval of the EMPG grant that funds emergency managers.
Got a motion? Second, all in favor, say aye. Okay.
This is something that probably should have gone on consent, but somehow it fell through the cracks. It's basically to do a budget amendment to move the money and set aside the money for the grant that you approved last week.
We approve BA 2605.
Just, that's not correct, is it, Robbie? Where'd you get 2605 out here? Okay, I'm just looking on the paper. Okay, got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
So the next one is the provision description for the Tourism Development Director. There were some minor changes that needs to be done. We're about ready to re-advertise for that. Clint brought them to my attention and we're bringing them to your attention. It eliminates any references to the Administrative Manager, which does not exist. It requires the TDC Director to coordinate facility uses with the Landscaping and Parks Development Director, and it also has them be the backup when the county PIO officer's on a bill.
So I have, Chip and I have.
Yes, sir.
So I know other counties, they have one person that does dual roles in the TDC and the Economic Development. Couldn't we save money if we just let one person do that? And can we look into that, if that can be done?
That would be the will of the board. If the board gives us such direction, we will look at it.
I mean, it eliminates a $80,000 a year position, even if you had to give whoever the Economic Development Director a little bit of a raise to do that job. I mean, I think we should talk to her and see if she is, think she's capable of doing those jobs. And if so, we should look at that at some point, save some money. And I know, like I say, I know other counties, a lot of other counties do that.
I would be willing to look at it and see what it looks like. I mean, there's funding guidelines through TDC on these disposition. And, but I would be open to discussion and let's, rather than us creating our will, do some research and see how it's done otherwise throughout the state because it's definitely done different throughout the state than the ways we do it.
Even our neighbors in Swanee County do it.
I'm tired of comparing to Swanee County. So I don't want to hear that crap no more.
I'm talking about Swanee County.
Swanee County and Nassau County, I'm.
Check the trash assessment, Swanee County. Pick your own trash.
Yeah, they can't even figure out where to put the trash bags.
So Marion County actually privatized theirs.
Oh, and I love Swanee County.
Gainesville has Visit Gainesville. So it's, you've got 67 counties, so we'll look at all 67 counties.
So, okay, the administrative manager, that was the.
That was back when we had three division managers.
That we need today. Okay, just want to make that.
It's not even in our administrative code. The question is, do you want to?
We can print a new paper, but got you.
You want to amend the job description or table?
I'm going to amend the job description to what you have here.
Got a motion?
Uh.
What's that? Discussion?
Go ahead. You're just updating the direct possession. You're not saying we're not going to look at the other thing, right?
No, you tell us to look at it, we'll look at it. We will follow the board's direction. No question about that.
But just for clarification, I chaired the tourist development. There's a, this is, the update here is needed to go forth and advertise this open position. But with that being said, Clint, do you mind coming up and throw a little bit of light on this situation, please?
And we can update position description and still hold off.
Say that again?
You can update position description and still delay filling the position until we do this analysis.
Well, let's go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Clint Pittman, Landscaping and Parks Director and currently interim TDC Director. These changes need to be made in the job description regardless of what direction y'all go because the job dues are going to be the same even if one person takes both of them. The reason for these changes is some of these positions that were in the old job description don't exist anymore. So we're hiring somebody based on a false pretense of who they answer to and what they do. So these changes need to be made regardless. Now, when we start comparing other counties to what TDC and Economic Development does, that needs to be looked at real hard because we are bigger than a lot of the counties that do this joint venture. So there's a lot of moving parts there that these other counties don't do and they're funded differently. TDC is funded differently in some of these counties that don't directly receive the bed tax money. They're funded through general fund. So a lot of things need to be looked at before y'all even consider joining the twos based on how we operate in Columbia County. So that, that needs to be looked at totally different. My recommendation is that we do go ahead, make these changes, and then y'all can determine if you want to join the two, but we've got to get this underway to hire somebody in order for us to keep receiving bed tax money.
Correct.
So we got a motion in the second?
So I've made a motion to basically adopt this.
Adopt these changes.
And you already got a second?
No, do not. Got a motion?
Yes, I could.
Do you second it? Okay, any other questions, Kim? All in favor, say aye.
So Karen, Mayor Pro EMS, their COP CN's expiring, they'd like to renew.
Mayor Pro is.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2025 R 252.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Did you want to mention?
I mean, I'm working, as y'all directed last time, I've pulled Sarasota County's program and I'm analyzing it. It looks pretty good. I mean, it requires the applicant to demonstrate need and all those sorts of things that we talked about last time. So I am working on it. I told Commissioner Ford the other day, I got four or five things I'm drafting right now, but it's one of them. So hopefully have an update for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
We're keeping Joel very busy.
I'm not complaining. Happy to work.
So the last, well, there's two things left, one addition, but this one is the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Housing Grant. You approved us to apply for it. We have been awarded $1.225 million. This is the grant agreement if you wish to move forward.
Move to approve instead of the 2023-24 CDVG Small Cities Grant.
Second.
Got a motion? Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed.
And then finally, there's one last addition, and that was the ask to piggyback for the power project phase one, which is the actual construction of the tower itself in Swanee Valley. You have the contract on the additions thing. We don't have time to go out to it. I'll be honest, we'll run out of time. Money will expire. If we are going to build this tower, this is the best route you have.
I make a motion, we go ahead and do the piggyback. Second.
Got a motion in the second. For discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you very much.
And just for the record, on the CTPT grant, because I asked it Tuesday or Monday, I guess, when we met, there's a $50,000 match, which is reasonable on this type of money for that grant. But it's going to take a while for it to go forth. And this is the one that helped me out, his name is Antonio, will be.
Well, Antonio helped to supply for the grant.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty confident they're going to require us to offer bid for a grant manager for this specific grant. He may get it. He got the last one, but.
When that's awarded, when that's discussed, is that awarded by dollars and cents or is that by RFQ?
It's an RFP.
RFP.
We have to follow federal guidelines, so we have to do it the way the federal government tells us.
Got you, okay.
All right, do you know off the top of your head where that tower's going out in Swanee Valley?
Yeah, it's going at the fire station.
Okay.
All right, Jeff?
Forty-six.
See, Jeff agrees.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, all right, thank you, David. Okay, open public comments. I know, talking to these young men this morning and Ben got something, I'll touch on it after he talks, but go ahead. Go ahead, Ben, thank you.
My name is Ben Loftrem. I'm here to talk about hopefully getting some school zone speeding enforcement program ticket cameras. I talked to Officer Snipes, who is the resource officer and also functions as the traffic control officer in the mornings at Columbia City Elementary. And he stated he has seen people driving above the 20 mile an hour speed limit, but he is not able to leave his post of directing traffic to ticket them. He also posted, said that it would be nice if there was other officers nearby that could ticket the speeders, but reality is, most of the time, they are busy doing other things. On Monday, the city of Lake City approved adding these exact same cameras for the school zones in the city of Lake City. So maybe we could get the same type that they are using. I know that some people pay attention in school zones, but everybody pays attention when it hits them in their wallet. There's already signage that states that speeding fines are doubled in the school zones. So I can think of no reason why we would not utilize automation to free up our officers from writing speeding tickets in the school zone. Now, after the time change, it's gotten a little better, especially mornings were really bad when it was dark. But either which way, some areas, like I'm talking 47 South by Columbia City, people are used to going fast on that road and they don't always pay attention, especially coming up that hill going south on 47. They see the light, but if there's not already people slowing down in front of them, sometimes they don't. Or they'll figure, I feel like I'm going slow. I was going 60, now I'm going 30. So you feel like you have slowed down, but you're still not at the 20 mile an hour you're supposed to be. And there's a reason why the fines are doubled, but also, you know, you can't have officers at every school zone every morning. And there's a reason why the fines are doubled, but also, you know, you can't have officers at every school zone every morning. With this system, it's super easy. It takes a picture and now according to the city chief, he said when he was looking into it, you know, people are scared, well, I got a ticket when it wasn't, you know, the yellow light wasn't flashing, or school wasn't in session, or it was over Thanksgiving, or something like that. He said, well, the way it works, supposedly according to his system, you know, it sends the report, you know, your speeding, sends it to their data people. They look at it, say it looks legit. Then they send it to the to the city of Lake City. They have an officer that looks at it that's also involved with the school system, so he knows if school was in session that day, if the yellow lights were blinking. And if all of that is correct, then he approves, yes, they get the ticket. Now, if it wasn't in session or the lights weren't blinking, then you shouldn't get the ticket. And so then they'll just throw it out and it'll just go nowhere. Anyway, thank you.
Myself and David, we was down there last year and the other commissioners, we were approached by a vendor.
In one city use.
Is it the same one? Okay. I didn't remember the detail of review, but I guess, David, that would be something you need to reach out to the sheriff with and get more communication, because if I remember the discussion, the majority of the funds raised by this goes to the sheriff's office.
That is correct, and the sheriff would have to sign off on this. It's not something we could do without him.
So get with the sheriff and we'll know then?
It's, it sounded like a pretty neat program how they, it's pretty well, it's no cost to the county. It's no equipment cost. They do the install and everything. It was, it was pretty neat. But, but again, the sheriff's got to give us blessing.
I do know Baker County did that program.
They did.
Scotty Roden in Baker County.
You're supposed to go slow in.
I think they get you in the pocket, but it does not.
Yeah, everywhere else, I'm rolling.
If I remember right, I hope I'm right to say this, I don't think it hits your points. There was something that was weird about it, but anyhow.
But if it's something the sheriff's interested in, we could bring the vendor in here.
Talking to Ben this morning, it's, you know, we all know the Columbia City crisis and it's, and of course Fort White, I can't imagine, that's bad too right there downtown. It's a death zone. Okay, okay, anybody else? Public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
I got three questions for you gentlemen. First one is, I was here at the last meeting and went over all of the waste probe. I think it was a little over an hour y'all talked about, had to beat that force and then beat it again today. Two questions. Some of y'all said that if it goes out bid, it's going to be quite a bit higher. Well, if that's true, I own two businesses. I can't run neither one of them at a loss. Y'all asked some pertinent questions, but to me, I'd be asking, how can you be so much cheaper than everybody else? There's something there that don't make the smell of test to me. That's just me. The second one is, if you're looking at getting the east side school, will the, Kyle King, will he still need the bank building?
You're talking about, you're talking about five points.
Five points, yeah. Where's the room for that, for him out there? Hold on, David, just one minute.
I will.
Back in a past life, I worked for corporate. We did a three, a five, and a ten-year plan. It's like any other of your departments need room. And if so, why aren't we using all of the synergies and get everything at once at one location? Which I thought for years and years, Lake Shore would have been the best place to go. Plenty of parking, plenty of room, but that's just me. The last question is reporter building. What are we doing with that? The Lake City Reporter Building?
I got a couple of rent from it. Well, you got, you got.
I think David.
Career showers renting out from it.
So, okay, we'll go backwards. In terms of the reporter building, it's currently being renovated. The contractor's out there renovating it. Before we got to the point of renovating it, we had used it for FEMA, we had used it for the National Guard, we've used it for several things while we were trying to figure out what the best way to approach renovation is. Kevin's worked on the renovations. They should be done in January. We already have one tenant, which is Florida Crown. The ultimate goal was to move building and zoning and clear, and Sally Ford's office. That got a little squandered when the state decided they were going to take it over, but now the state isn't going to take it over. So I think we'll probably go back to the plan of moving them over there, clearing out the basement so that Guardian Ed Lightum could come into the annex.
You know, we can recoup our county funds if I rent it?
Well, if Guardian Ed Lightum moves into a county building, then we are no longer paying rent for Guardian Ed Lightum. So we're paying rent to somebody to house Guardian Ed Lightum. Similar with the court administration, there is rent being paid to First Federal for them to run the First Federal building, getting them into county-owned facilities. Our limits our need to pay those rents.
Right, but my question was, and I know we paid a pretty good premium for the building, then we had to do the roof.
Correct.
Seems to me like we're upside down as far as a business decision on that building. Have you got a plan to recoup your money or the taxpayers' money?
Well, at the end of the day, we have to provide space for all these different people inside the county, like quarter men, our guardian Ed Lightum, and we run out of space, basically.
Yeah.
We're renting space now, so we can take that money and put them in there, and we're not paying that rent anymore.
So it's not going to pay for itself? Okay.
Well, we did not say that. We did not say that.
We don't have to pay anymore. Yeah. We're paying rent right now for where these people are at.
We are obligated.
We're not paying that rent anymore.
We are obligated to provide space. So if we don't have our own building, we don't have space to put these things, we have to pay rent. So the way to recoup our money is to own our own buildings and don't pay rent. It makes more sense for the county to own the space that we have to provide than to rent it from somebody else.
Okay.
So what was the other question I forgot?
I know what you're saying, but I disagree, but that's, that's me. The tax collectors.
The tax collectors thing. Kyle feels the bank building, because of the drive-throughs and the setup and the fact that it is downtown, is the ideal location for him. This is a decision that he has made, is not a decision we've made. We do support his, based on what the board said, I think we support that decision. But being in a bank building that's designed with drive-through lanes and being downtown, he feels is critical for the citizens to get the best service. And again, owning it rather than leasing it makes more sense.
Yeah, okay, so, so he won't be moving in to the five points if you take that.
I don't know that five points would be suitable for.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be suitable.
There's no drive-through, there's no.
It's a one-way street there too.
Yeah.
It's a one-way street there, though. I don't know why it's one-way.
But, well, I know Kevin laid out pretty much why the bids five years ago was kind of skewed. However, that was back in COVID, if y'all remember, so. I just, for the life of me, I can't see how Waste Probe can operate at a loss, according to his chart, when some of y'all are convinced that the the bids will come back extremely higher than what his price is. Just, I don't. Can you validate that anyway?
I don't think anybody knows what the bid's going to be. I know that it happened years ago, but there's no way to tell how much your bid's going to be.
I agree.
We just did a bid here when we were just doing it, and one guy was five hundred, the other one was two hundred. Well, that fella doing the two hundred ain't losing money, so I don't know, you know, I, I don't know.
Not to put words in your mouth, Carl, but I think what you're saying is that they're operating today at nine dollars and apparently they're surviving.
Well, exactly.
I'll just use this for an example. The mowing contract. When that mowing contract come in, everybody said there's no way he can do that for that money. No way. He's done it for how many, two years now? For that, and that cost, sure for you. So, you know, I think it's up to the business owner to determine whether he's making money or not. I don't know if they're making money or not, obviously they are, so.
But it's.
If they're staying in business, you know.
Would, you Rocky, you, I believe you quoted that if you put that out the bid, it'd come back at nineteen dollars.
I said, if you go by what the bid was five years ago.
But, yeah, that was five years ago.
Well, something that went up to five years is my point.
Well, yes. With that logic, then you just made the statement about the flood management. How can you look out that far and know that it's going to be flooding? But you can look back five years ago and see where those prices are going to maintain.
Oh, you wasn't listening very good.
I guess not. Y'all talk so much, it's hard to pay attention.
I said, how do you predict what it's going to be in twenty seventy or twenty sixty? We have flooding every day. We have flooding now.
Yeah.
But we have information on past history of where the flood is right now, and that's what we base it on. We're not, I don't know how you go thirty years in the, in the future and decide where that, how much flooding you're going to be.
Well, you explain that, you model it, but that's it.
Thank you, Carl.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Commissioners, Mr. Parnell?
Real quick, so we got this grant open for the mega park today, right? Is that three?
Three o'clock, Mega Park.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody here, three? Okay, anyway, so back to the mega park. So this might be a question for Joel, but do we have anything in place, like a clause or anything, and any agreements with the vendors out there that says they need to hire a certain amount of Columbia County residents for those jobs? Because if we have a vendor come in here and let's just say they bring in sixty jobs, they bring in sixty of their own people, we haven't done anything for our economy as far as getting our people jobs out there. So is there anything in place for that?
So in the procurement process, we have certain jobs and certain projects where we are allowed to use local preference to award additional points. We do that where we can. Can't always do it. A lot of times, federal project or something like that, we can't necessarily do that. But I do know procurement at every opportunity puts local preference in. That's how you capture it. We don't, we try not to get too much into means and methods for how people do what they do. We say we need to get to point A, you know, from point A to point B, how much you're going to charge me to do it, and then we try to go from there. We could potentially delve into means and methods if you wanted to go that way. I would need to study that a little bit, but I can tell you, yes, we are in procurement, already using local preference whenever we can.
Right, it might be something to look into. Like I said, I'd hate for them to get established and then they bring in, I'm just using sixty jobs, I don't know that, but then they bring in sixty of their own people to hold those jobs. Now, our Columbia County residents didn't even get a shot at those jobs because they came in with all their own people.
Now, we'll tell you, when we do economic development projects, we do, we want them to hire within our market. That is part of what we talk about. They can't all just be people.
I think these vendors ought to have something similar because we're pushing the mega park for the jobs, but if they come with their own people, we shot ourselves in the foot.
And what we do see, and well, Jennifer's not here anymore, but what you do typically see is like the top-level management people do come in from out of town, right? And then they'll establish their label.
They're not going to reach all of two hundred people.
True, true, but I just want to be sure that, you know what I mean?
It's just like, if you look at cold storage, most of those Columbia County. And they came in with people, you know, when they came in, they had people that already knew how to do the jobs they work.
Right, right, right.
What it does, even if they don't come in with them, those people either opt out, quit their jobs, or get fired, and then they come, you know, they try to.
Commissioner Parnell, when you get a chance to see economic development agreements, when hopefully we'll have some that you can see here, look for FTE, full-time equivalency. Sometimes one FTE is actually two or three part-time jobs. So we're real careful with them when they say, oh, I'm creating three hundred jobs. Well, how many FTEs are you?
Right.
And it might only be a hundred FTEs. So we do try to talk in correct terms, because you're honing in on exactly what the issue, it can't be smoking mirrors, right? It's got to be real jobs.
Yeah, okay. That's all I got.
That's four?
I'm good.
Robbie?
I'm good. No talking today.
Okay. All right. Snap?
We're adjourned, thank you.
We're going to go back.